Okay, friends, just real quickly, it's 5:58 and we got a pile of letters in the last few hours and a couple of our council members have not had a chance to review the supplemental information yet. So we're going to take an extra five minutes or so, so we're going to start at about 6:05 and we're going to let them get a chance to peruse those and see what's in there because we want to make sure that everybody is aware of everything that we have received. So your patience is appreciated and give us a few extra minutes, so that's about seven minutes from now. Okay, so talk amongst yourselves.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seacrest, here. Councilmember George, here. Councilmember Barnage, here. Sorry, Mayor Protim Guthrie, here.
Mayor Bay Russum, here.
Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection?
Thank you. And would you please join me in the flag salute? Ready, begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's not often we have so many people doing the pledge with us. That was lovely. Okay, so that takes us to item five, agenda review, and we do have some movement we're going to do with the agenda this evening. Councilmember Barnage, did you want to make a request?
Since a few of us have to step down for the T-Bid item, I'd like to put that last on the agenda. Please request that.
Any objections? All right, so we will move item 10A to after item 12B. And just because we will have council members leaving before the council communications on item 13, we'll move council communications then to, let's see, just after item eight, after we give our report outs. So council will be talking amongst itself for just a few moments. Also, a quick word, I'm guessing you're not here for the council communications part. We've got a full house tonight. That item is item 9D, so if you would just be patient as we get through some of our beginning stuff, we will get to the items that you're all here to talk about in due time. So with that, we have no closed session announcements and we have no ordinances this evening, so that takes us straight to special presentations. And I'm excited to present an honorary proclamation declaring May 2024 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I will be joined at the podium by Kathy Mink, a board member for the Diversity Coalition of San Luis Obispo. So Kathy, if you would meet me up there.
So this is an honorary proclamation declaring the month of May 2024 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, whereas Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month recognizes the history and achievements of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, AANHPIs across our nation. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our nation, state, and city more vibrant through diversity of cultures, languages, and religions. The American story as we know it would not be, or would be impossible without the strength, contributions, and legacies of AANHPIs who have helped build and unite this country in each successive generation. And whereas we also celebrate and honor invaluable contributions the AANHPI communities have made to our national and local culture in the arts, law, science, technology, sports, and public service. And whereas in spite of the strength shown and successes achieved, the American dream remains out of reach for far too many AANHPI families. AANHPI communities face systemic barriers to economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, and personal safety. And whereas we recognize the heightened fear felt by many Asian American communities in the wake of increasingly observable layers of hate directed towards women and elders of Asian descent in particular. And whereas acts of anti-Asian bias are wrong, they are un-American and they must stop. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our nation and our community stronger. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Rae Russum, mayor of the city of Aurora Grande, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month and call upon the citizens of Aurora Grande to learn more about the history of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders. And we invite you to speak.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of the Diversity Coalition, San Luis Obispo County, I want to thank you for this proclamation and for your support for the AAPI community. I just want to quickly mention one way that the Diversity Coalition supports the AAPI community, and that's through our speakers in the schools program. I didn't know until I looked it up that Afghanistan and Syria are included in that population and we have refugees from both countries speaking at our schools. We've also had Cambodian refugees. That was lovely. Okay, so that takes us to item five, agenda review, and we do have some movement we're going to do with the agenda this evening. Councilmember Barnage, did you want to make a request?
Since a few of us have to step down for the T-Bid item, I'd like to put that last on the agenda. Please, request that.
Any objections? All right, so we will move item 10A to after item 12B. And just because we will have council members leaving before the council communications on item 13, we'll move council communications then to, let's see, just after item eight, after we give our report outs. So council will be talking amongst itself for just a few moments. Also, a quick word, I'm guessing you're not here for the council communications part. We've got a full house tonight. That item is item 9D, so if you would just be patient as we get through some of our beginning stuff, we will get to the items that you're all here to talk about in due time. So with that, we have no closed session announcements and we have no ordinances this evening, so that takes us straight to special presentations. And I'm excited to present an honorary proclamation declaring May 2024 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I will be joined at the podium by Kathy Mink, a board member for the Diversity Coalition of San Luis Obispo. So Kathy, if you would meet me up there. So this is an honorary proclamation declaring the month of May 2024 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month recognizes the history and achievements of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, A.A.N.H.P.I.s, across our nation. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our nation, state, and city more vibrant through diversity of cultures, languages, and religions. The American story as we know it would not be, or would be impossible, without the strength, contributions, and legacies of A.A.N.H.P.I.s who have helped build and unite this country in each successive generation. And whereas we also celebrate and honor invaluable contributions the A.A.N.H.P.I. communities have made to our national and local culture in the arts, law, science, technology, sports, and public service. And whereas in spite of the strength shown and successes achieved, the American dream remains out of reach for far too many A.A.N.H.P.I. families. A.A.N.H.P.I. communities face systemic barriers to economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, and personal safety. And whereas we recognize the heightened fear felt by many Asian American communities in the wake of increasingly observable layers of hate directed towards women and elders of Asian descent in particular. And whereas acts of anti-Asian bias are wrong, they are un-American and they must stop. And whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our nation and our community stronger. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Rae Russum, Mayor of the City of Aurora Grande, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month and call upon the citizens of Aurora Grande to learn more about the history of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders. And we invite you to speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And on behalf of the Diversity Coalition, San Luis Obispo County, I want to thank you for this proclamation and for your support for the A.A.P.I. community. I just want to quickly mention one way that the Diversity Coalition supports the A.A.P.I. community, and that's through our speakers in the schools program. I didn't know until I looked it up that Afghanistan and Syria are included in that population. And we have refugees from both countries speaking at our schools. We've also had Cambodian refugees who survived the Khmer Rouge genocide speak to our high school students. And of course, Japanese internment survivor has spoken to our schools. And this week, we're bringing a Pakistani refugee to speak to our schools. So in that way, our students are learning about the A.A.P.I. experience, and I thank you for that. And I just want to add, because of the crowd here this evening, that the Diversity Coalition supports all marginalized communities, and we hope that you will continue to fly the pride flag in June. Thank you very much for this.
All right. Friends, we're going to have a little civics lesson here, so we want to be really clear. And I appreciate that people are fired up on all sides right now. And so I want to be clear, if you would, please, it's going to be hard to resist to clap when you are happy with something someone is saying, and not so much when you're not happy with that. And we want to make sure that everyone who is here to express their opinion, no matter which side of an issue they are on, feels comfortable coming to the dais. So if you would, please extend that courtesy. And so I know that there's a lot of energy and excitement, but if you could hold that, and if you want to do jazz hands, you can do that, but we want to make sure that everybody can come to the dais and feel comfortable. Okay? So with that, let's move on to items. Did you want to say anything by any chance? Sometimes you do. Okay. All right. Item 6B is an honorary proclamation declaring May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And at the dais, I'd like to invite Janine Simon. She's an AGHS senior and youth advisory board member for the Center for Child and Adolescent Mental Health. I guess honorary proclamations are different. Okay. This is an honorary proclamation declaring the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas our mental health includes our body, mind, and heart, it is an important part of our overall health, and it affects the way we think, feel, act, and engage with others. And whereas our community, our culture, and our safe spaces help support our mental health and help set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health. And whereas we celebrate the growing awareness and support for mental health in our community, we are seeing our community embrace the initiatives and resources that aim to promote mental health. And whereas we acknowledge the influence of stigma and cultural differences and how they can impact if, how, and when a person seeks help. We also recognize that stigma can contribute to some misunderstandings about mental health that can span generations and cultures. And whereas it is important that we, as a community, promote mental health together in a coordinated, inclusive, and culturally responsive way. Each citizen, family, organization, provider, and valued stakeholder shares a responsibility to help keep our communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Rae Russum, Mayor of the City of Aurora Grande, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month and encourage policymakers, organizations, localities, schools, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and persons with lived experience to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities that promote mental health and wellness for all individuals and families.
Hi, I'm Janine. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and our city council and to everybody who's here. I'm a part of CCMH, the Central Coast Adolescent for Mensa Health, and we're a center that gives treatment to adolescents in order to meet affordability and accessibility. And they had created YAB, a youth advisory board, that I'm a part of along with my other friends. And that experience has been a really amazing opportunity for me because I've grown as a person and I've learned a lot along the way. And so I'd like to say thank you to Lon specifically for giving me that opportunity. And I'd like to invite everybody to our second annual State of State Youth Presentation on May 22 at 6:00 PM at the South Regional Center. Thank you.
Hi, as the president of the Center for Child and Adolescent Mental Health, I just want to thank all of you for your support. We all are here together to support our youth and their families. Our nonprofit builds access to more affordable and quality mental health care. We have free parent support groups, and we have soon much more availability for therapy. So without all of us, and without you especially, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So thank you.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Friedman. It is her vision and her drive and determination to help the youth in our community, nationwide, actually. So she's the one that was really the driving force behind starting this organization, and we're going to do good things. Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to item 6C. We don't normally have three proclamations in the same day, but it's a happy month. So this is honorary proclamation declaring May 5 through 11, 2024, as Public Service Appreciation Week, and we have our esteemed city manager, Mr. Downing, to meet me over there.
No, no, please don't clap.
Mr. Downing. This is an honorary proclamation declaring May 5 through 11, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the city, county, state, and federal levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working. Whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas many public servants, including police officers, firefighters, public works personnel, building inspectors, border patrol officers, military personnel, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include administrators, managers, clerical personnel, planners, engineers, information technology, and recreation professionals, laborers, social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Rae Russum, Mayor of the City of Aurora Grande, do hereby recognize and proclaim May 5 through 11, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Aurora Grande, and urge and encourage all citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As your new city manager, I was volunteered to receive the proclamation on behalf of all of your talented staff. It seemed like a really great idea at the time when we weren't expecting a full room full of people. Now, for some, public service is a profession; for others, it is a calling. For yet even others like me, it's something you fall into and you learn that you love. Every day, we strive to make a positive impact, often working behind the scenes, driven by a sense of duty and a passion for serving others. I share this recognition with my colleagues here in the room and everywhere throughout the city, whose unwavering dedication inspires me daily. Together, we stand as a testament to the power of service and the difference it can make in the lives of those that we serve. So as we celebrate Public Service Appreciation Week, let us renew our commitment to serving with integrity, compassion, and excellence. So thank you once again for this honor, and it is truly appreciated by your staff.
And it is sometimes easy to forget, on a beautiful day like today, how much especially our public service workers worked overtime during our storms both this year and last year. And so to keep them in our minds about how hard they work in really an unseen way is really appreciated. So thank you for keeping them in your hearts. All right, that takes us to city manager communications. Mr. Downing.
You want to hear more from me? Okay. So we do have quite a few things on our list to get through this evening, so I'll give you a few updates. Over in our public works department, the city is maintaining over eight miles of pavement with a protective slurry seal going on now through May 8. So we do have maps for the council and for the public to look at of where we're going to be and when. Those are available on our city's website under the spotlight section, so that's where you can find those. We are also having two community meetings regarding the trafficway bridge replacement project, starting tomorrow, April 24, at 6:00 PM, and another on Thursday, April 25, at 9:00 AM. So that's 6:00 PM tomorrow and 9:00 AM on Thursday, both of which will be here in the council chambers. All are welcome to come. Also in the coming weeks, starting on May 6, you will see construction mobilization for the Swinging Bridge Repair Project, and then we will start construction on that project on May 13. Over in community development, for those interested in accessory dwelling units or tiny homes on wheels, you can attend a workshop tomorrow, April 24, and Saturday, April 27, both from 10:00 AM to noon on both days here in the council chamber. You'll learn about design permitting, financing, and construction of these different housing opportunities. And then lastly, I am happy to announce that our new Five Cities Fire Authority Fire Chief, Scott Hallett, will be joining the team this coming Monday, April 29. Chief Hallett joins us from the Paso Robles Fire Department and has over 30 years of experience in our county and the fire service. And so we are really looking forward to having him on our team, and that will conclude my comments this evening, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Let's see if the council has any questions for you. Questions? All right, then we will roll forward to items seven. This is our city council reports. And for myself, I have very little to report. CJPA has not met. Central Coast Blue has not met. They are scheduled to meet in a week and a half. Five Cities Fire Authority did meet. I generally kick that over to my compatriot, Councilmember George, who takes far better notes than I do. And then at the San Luis Obispo County Mayor's meeting, Mayor Protem attended that. There were a number of us gone from that meeting. And South San Luis Obispo County Sanitation District also had its meeting canceled, so I have nothing to report. Mayor Protem.
Turns out I'm going to have to do this out of my head since I forgot my notes at home. So we'll do the easy part. IWMA County Water Resource Advisory Committee did not meet. Reach has not met, and Integrated Waste Management did not meet, which brings me to Council of Government, SLOCOG. So as we all know, a lot of funding is down from the state. LTF funding, which is something that comes directly back to the city, is going to be down about 7% this year. Some other funding that's down as well, as the state works through its budget shortage. I will say pretty good news that the Betterment Grants that we are participating in looks good for all of the Betterment Grants. We were able to fund all of the projects that were in the queue that, like many projects, were facing, once they went to bid, they were short of funding, so those were refunded and are all ready to go, and there's enough left over for these much smaller Betterment Grants. We did do the unmet needs. I think we over 135 comments for unmet needs all over the place. Sometimes I think they should consolidate them down to give them a little more meat because half of them are insufficient information to respond. None of them were deemed feasible to meet, given the funding. Most of the ones that did make it to the next level would have been increases in service, particularly on the regional routes, to go later or to go more often. Not on our list, but I did attend a 3C conference up in San Jose. Very interesting, particularly good time for me to go to one since I'm just new to this. And I'll say what comes from that, I mentioned before that, you know, there is this significant oversupply of solar. So the, I think some of you saw that they actually had negative pricing on solar already this year, so.
What'd you say? They what on solar?
There's negative pricing on solar, meaning there's nobody to buy it at all, so they're basically running it into the ground. So the theme of this was energy shift, which is either through batteries to store that energy and bring it back at the prime times when we actually do need it when we are short, and what they call a virtual power plant, which is either a significant power user or individual homes agreeing to either not do their, agree to using less power at any time that we have a peak emergency. So there's a lot of plans out there, look for significant changes in peak pricing because that's going to be the primary goal. They even talking about, they called it dynamic pricing, where they would change the pricing every week.
Like surge pricing on Uber?
Kind of. Yeah, although I've never ridden Uber, so I don't know about that. But, so, yeah, and that would be voluntary. And we're not talking about, so those would be people who were willing to take advantage of, who, you know, who might choose to not charge their car in the afternoon, which apparently a lot of people do, and then charge their vehicle at midnight. So it's going to be an interesting time, as they are now having to, to what they call slice of day, I think I mentioned this last time, slice of day where you have to prove that you can meet the highest demand of your customer base on the worst day, on the worst hour. So you have to have that capability, including, one of the things they do is buy a peaker plant that maybe is gas powered, put a battery in front of it, they may never turn the gas on, but if they need to, it's there to meet that need, and they meet their legal requirements. Those are my. Oh, yeah, the mayor's meeting yesterday, last Friday. What did we do at the mayor's meeting? Don Addis filled us in on all of the, there's a lot of stuff going on at the state. As those of us who follow the state, this is the time when all their bills have to get approved or they die. You know, there's thousands of bills and, you know, only about 500 or 700 of them will make it through this next two weeks. So she did talk about a lot of those things that are out there. And Supervisor Paulding talked about a much shorter list of the things that are going on the county, particularly the interface here in the Five Cities area with the fire authority and those things. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnage.
Thank you, Mayor. Neither of my committees, they're meeting in a week or two, but they have not met since I last reported out. Thank you.
Councilmember George.
Thank you. This is SLOC, only meets twice a year. They won't meet again until June, so I have nothing to report there. Five Cities Fire Authority, I'll keep it brief because I know we have a packed agenda. We adopted the fiscal 2024-2025 budget. We approved an employment agreement for our new fire chief, Scott Hallett. And I wanted to thank Chief Agson for stepping in as interim chief during that time. And then we are looking for edits from the county for the draft contract with Oceano for fire services, and we're hoping that staff will get that to us sometime in mid-May.
Thank you. And Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. Air Pollution Control District didn't meet. South County Chamber of Commerce, I don't have much to report except for I can tell you they have their April mixer tomorrow in Shell Beach at Andrews Real Estate from 5 to 7, and that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So this brings us to community, excuse me, council communications. Does anyone have council, remember, we're doing this out of order this evening. Does anyone have communications to share with the council tonight? All right, so we'll check item 13 off our list. So that moves us to community comments and suggestions. So let me be really clear, this is not the item you're all waiting for. This is where you get the chance to come talk to us about items that are not on tonight's agenda. So the council cannot comment or act because that's against the Brown Act, but if you would like to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda, you may come forward. You can speak for up to three minutes, and please address the council as one body. So if you would like to come up and speak on items that are not on this evening's agenda, please do so now. agenda, please do so now.
My name is Gayo Powell, and our flag is a constant reminder to me that I did not have the opportunity to meet my grandfathers as they both were, lost their lives in World War II. It also reminds me that my parents, very young, uh, my parents, uh, were very young when they lost their fathers and didn't get the experience of a father's love and guidance, that their mothers had lost their young husbands and were left to raise their children alone, and that my great-grandmothers and fathers lost their precious sons. I know many have experienced similar loss and tragedy, so we can enjoy the freedom to meet here today and respectfully discuss differences. It seems clear to me that most on this dais and some city staff do not respect or understand what this flag symbolizes to most Americans.
This is not the flag item, so if you'd like to save that for later...
You don't need to be clear to me, I'm talking about this flag. Is that on the item?
And could you please, could you please, uh, address the council, not the crowd?
Well, don't cut into my time. It seems clear to me that most on the dais and some city staff do not respect nor understand what this flag symbolizes to most Americans. It is a symbol of patriotism, freedom, liberty, and justice for all. This flag reminds us that no one has more rights than others, and that we will not be forced to comply with a special group or government or anyone's unconstitutional dictates that infringe on our civil rights. It is also a symbol that, of a remembrance regarding our nation's many domestic and foreign struggles, as well as the ethical challenges we have endured and conquered, making us wiser as we evolve together as a nation. Throughout our country's relatively young life, we have come a long way together as Americans, and this, uh, flag reminds us to strengthen our resolve and dedication to continue to implement, to continue to do better. At the same time, being diligent and working together to protect our great nation, our rights, our sovereignty, and to keep our country strong and united against foreign and domestic threats. If America is lost, freedom is lost, there is nowhere to escape to. Let's not be responsible for our own demise and collectively take a 10,000 view of our nation's leadership and the closer look at our city leadership and hold them accountable. We are not each other's enemies. United, unity, restoration, and love must prevail for the sake of our children and our independence. If we continue down a path of division that some seem hell-bent on shoving us down, divided we fall. I know some realize what is at stake, how fragile freedom is, and how much effort it takes to keep it, while too many others are completely blind to the fact that we are living in an unstable, potentially dangerous times. I am not referring to foreign threat, though there are. I am just concerned about, I am just, I am just as concerned about domestic threats, why our faces are buried in our smartphones and focused on the chaos created by world leaders perpetuated by some of our local leaders, and, uh, domestic threats lurk. We do not need our local leaders to focus on divisive agenda items.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda?
My name is Michael Punzalan. I'll just continue? As a community, we need to focus on how we create sustainability, support our police and sheriffs, plan and implement emergency and safety strategies, and take measures to become self-sufficient and self-reliant. I implore you and others to peek outside of your tiny world and realize your bubble will burst sooner than later. We are already living in a lawless state. Over 12 million-plus legal, illegal immigrants, many are military-age men, have flooded over our open borders the past three and a half years. Some are now receiving benefits, more benefits, better benefits than most citizens, including veterans. Thieves can legally go into any AG store and take up to $950 worth of merchandise and return each day thereafter for another go. If a merchant attempts to stop them, they can be fined up to $18,000 and potentially face jail time. Parents are forced to inject their children with over 72 so-called vaccines to receive a public education. Parents who refuse to affirm their confused child's gender or consent to sterilizing drugs and mutilating, mutilating surgeries could lose custody, making their child a ward of the state. Females, including children, are being forced to share their private spaces and play sports with males who claim they are female. This is allowed for not only humiliation, but sexual assaults, other violent attacks, and serious sport injuries. There are also state laws that force kids to be exposed to sexualization, indoctrination, transgenderism, and child pornography in our schools, which can lead to irreversible and damaging hormone blockers and sex hormones, chemical sterilization, castration, mutilation, and psychological damage to very young kids and teenagers. You all ignored the pornography I personally found at AG highs and shared with you. You took no action, making your position clear, and you have succeeded in creating great division with implementing your DEI social justice policy and dictates, an ideology fostered by critical race theory and diversity, equity, inclusion, and social justice initiatives that foster racism and exclusion cloaked in transgenderism ideology. Several of you are responsible for unleashing this dangerous ideology on our community. Your primary duty is to the Constitution, which protects us, we the people, from domestic enemies that threaten our individualism, sovereignty, and our constitutional republic. This flag should have been a constant reminder of your duties, but instead you prefer to make a mockery of the principles and values it symbolizes, and prefer to implement and enforce your racist DEI social justice policy upon the citizens of Aurora Grande. This unjust policy needs to be abolished. When citizens are to abide by laws and our policies passed by our elected government officials, our government officials must follow constitutional law. As Martin Luther King Jr. stated...
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to finish this last paragraph? Thank you so much.
Okay, remember everyone, remember everyone, if you would, please let everyone come. They have the right to speak.
So, when citizens are to abide by laws and/or policies passed by our elected government officials, our government officials must follow constitutional law. As Martin Luther King Jr. stated in a letter he wrote from Birmingham Jail, it is one of the most important moral statements ever made. One may well ask, how can you advocate breaking some laws and obeying others? The answer lies in the fact that there are two types of laws. There are just laws, and there are unjust laws. I would be the first to advocate obeying just laws. One has not only a legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws. Conversely, one has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws. I would agree with Saint Augustine that an unjust law is no law at all. Wise words and an excellent example of what this flag stands for. I would also like to add that, um, there are a lot of testimonies going around now of children who, at 12 years of age, have been taking hormone blockers. By the time they're 15, they convert to a man or a woman. Doctors are allowed to do the surgery. They cut off their breasts, or they cut off their penis, and they tell these people they can have babies and have a normal life. By the time they're 19, they look back, and they're horrified at what they were allowed to do. They're too young to make this decision, and you all can stop it. You cannot allow DEI. You can take the books out of the library. You do have the authority to do that.
Would, oh, please don't, please don't. Remember, we're doing that for all. And would anyone else like to come forward? Hi.
Hi, is, is this close enough?
We can hear you.
My name is Ashley, and, um, I'm a college student currently at, uh, Questa, and I'm a transgender American, and I, I have to thank Gayo Powell for, um, showing us how well our flag represents everybody in, here in America. I, too, have family who have gone to war. My granddad was, uh, Vietnam War vet, and he would always come up and say to me, um, "Hey, I got a war story for you, but let me go pee first." Um, and I always respected him because he really cared about the livelihoods and the s- self-awareness of these communities within our county and et cetera. And one thing that really vibed with me, if we are to say, is he told me once that we can't have a world, a democracy, that isn't representative, as throughout American history, our whole idea and formulation of government is based on representation. Now, I'm probably going to come back up here once again, but, uh, I'll just say I'm a transgender American, um, I identify as she/her. I still have a penis, and I'm 19, uh, and I am quite happy with life, and I think a lot of people would agree with me, at least, um, those of our friends on this, in this room. Um, and I don't hate those who hate us. I just hope that we can be represented.
Thank you. Whoa, 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 not, thank you. Crowd, I, I'm trying my best. We need, we want to make sure that in Aurora Grande, we are accepting of everyone coming to that dais and exercising their First Amendment rights, okay? So, would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, council staff. Thank you so much for what you're doing. I couldn't stand being up there and having to have all these people staring at me and complaining. They never come unless they have something to complain about. So, I would hate to be, uh, in your shoes, so thank you. Um, I, I just want to say how much I appreciate what you're trying to do, and, um, you know, I, I just, uh, you know, I was going to make a point that, well, it's probably irrelevant, but thank you for your patience with everybody here, and I, I do appreciate what you're trying to do. And, uh, I hope we can all, in the words of Rodney King, let's all try to get along, okay? Thanks, y'all.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for the commemoration of Mental Health Awareness Month in May. As someone with autism, it really makes me, uh, it really makes me feel seen, heard, and appreciated. I also just wanted to express hope that this council also starts trying to look at some kind of land conservation efforts. I heard mentions a lot of the, um, solar-powered energy, and I express hope that we might be able to see more and more clean energy coming into Aurora Grande. I know that a lot of our schools recently have begun to implement that via solar panels. I know Paulding Middle School and Aurora Grande High School have both been working pretty hard on that, and as a student at Aurora Grande High School, I'm quite proud of that. I'd also express hope that we, um, start pushing a little bit more, or I guess encouraging is probably the better word, uh, a little bit more participation in these council meetings, even when we aren't seeing a topic as divisive as the one here today, because civic engagement is extremely important, regardless of where you stand on policies. If you don't understand those policies, then you can hardly complain when you're upset with how they affect you. Thank you.
If, if only you all would show up in two weeks from tonight. We'll look forward to seeing you all. That was wise words. Thank you. Anyone else on items not on tonight's agenda?
I was inspired by, uh, the discussion of green energy, and I would like to say, I've seen in a lot of talks about green energy, talk about things homeowners can do. It creates a situation that kind of leaves renters like myself out of the equation. So, I would like to see some initiatives to either get landlords involved, or to offer those of us who aren't homeowners, opportunities to make progress in this area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one in chambers, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment on items not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. We have quite a few. Our first speaker will be Glenn Miller, followed by Brenton. Okay, Glenn, you're able to speak now.
Hi, good evening. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
I did have a quick, uh, speech prepared here. So, uh, you will never be a real woman. You have no womb, you have no ovaries, you have no eggs. You're a homosexual man twisted by drugs and surgery into a crude mockery of nature's perfection. All the validation you get is two-faced and half-hearted. Behind your back, people mock you. Your parents are disgusting.
Excuse me, this, uh, for the public commenter, this is the city attorney.
Let me speak, this is free speech.
It is, but during public comment, it needs to be something that's within the purview of city business, and it cannot be profane or slanderous towards an individual.
You let everyone else speak, let me speak.
So, we'd request...
Can I go, city attorney? Can I go?
Yes, we, we would request that you retain speech that's within the purview of the city business, and if you fail to do so, the city may need to mute you from proceeding.
Okay, I understand. I'm, I'm, well, basically, my speech is to call for a resolution against the, what I believe is grooming that's going on in our schools, in our public media, and everything. Um, so, uh, am I allowed to continue, or are you going to cut me off? I'll take that as I'm allowed to continue. Thank you. Uh, where was I? Yeah, I'll just start here. All right, men are utterly repulsed by you. Thousands of years of evolution have allowed men to sniff out frauds with incredible efficiency.
Speaker, again, this is a city attorney, so the city policies require that you not defame certain individuals and that the matter be within city business, so we'd give you one more opportunity to request something that's within the city's purview, or we'd have to mute you from general public comment.
Okay, I understand, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir, Mr. Attorney. Well, basically, what I wanted to say is, um, I found a website online. It's, uh, GTV, that's G as in golf, T as in tango, V as in victor, flyers, F-L-Y-E-R-S, dot com, GTVflyers.com, and, uh, it has a lot of information on, uh, on the topic that I guess I'm not allowed to talk about, um, and it really explains that Jews are behind transgenderism.
All right, we are going to, sir, we're going to mute you, and I'd just like to make a...
Please let us do city business. Please let us do city business, and let the city attorney have the floor.
Okay, so I just want to note for the record, for all those that are going to speak following on public comment, uh, it's generally accepted that a legislative body may stop a speaker from engaging in irrelevant speech, meaning speech not on the topic on the specific item, or in this instance, speech that doesn't fall within the purview of city business. So, to the extent there's hate speech on the platform that's not specific to city business, all speakers, please be aware that the city will give you one warning and then mute you, uh, from speaking to the extent it's irrelevant to city business. Thank you.
All right, let's go to the next speaker, please.
Okay, the next speaker is Brenton, and Brenton, you're able to speak now.
Yes, hello, city council. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Brenton Tarrant, and I was just hoping to speak on, ideally, an agenda item that we can add, uh, to maybe a future meeting. I am very for inclusion, and however, I, I find it quite reprehensible that, you know, we celebrate all cultures, except, you know, we don't seem to celebrate white Europeans. You know, I, I noticed we have a Black History Month, you know, we have Pride Month, we have, you know, Jewish American Heritage Month, we have Asian American Heritage Month. I don't see any sort of European-American or any sort of white History Month, or like a white History Year. I mean, I'd love to name some amazing things that white people have done. You know, going to school, I was, you know, taught that white people are responsible for slavery and for, you know, the, the mass slaughtering of Native Americans, when quite frankly, some of those were somewhat twisted, you know? They weren't necessarily fully perpetrated by white people, and I, I just want to say some great things that white people have done. White people have created your cell phones, your cars, your modern architecture. Um, you, you can thank us for, you know, the English language that we all speak every day, what we all use, that was created by white people. But, you know, we seem to celebrate a lot of... But, you know, we seem to celebrate a lot of others who, you know, I don't necessarily think have contributed as much as we have, and I just find it quite disparaging towards white people. I believe that as a white person, we should be proud of our race, we should stick up for our race, and we should be able to stick up for what we stand for. We should preach Christian values. We should, you know, name the synagogue of Satan. They're very, they're very quite intrinsically dispersed within a lot of these negative aspects of our society that are meant to be detrimental to us. I mean, you look at the LGBTQ movement, and I mean, it is completely, I mean, so many people are depressed and suicidal, and I think that's awful. I wouldn't want my child to ever be depressed or suicidal. I mean, 41% of transgender individuals attempt suicide. I would never want my child to be trans for that very reason. I would never want my child to die. You know, I see that, you know, there's an extreme amount of violence towards whites. I mean, black people attack whites more than whites attack blacks. You're more likely to be attacked by a black person if you're white than, you know, a black person is to be attacked by a white. But, you know, if you were to pay attention to the narrative, it would not, it would not seem that way. It would seem that, you know, black people are being viciously mauled, which is not at all the case. It's not at all the case. And I would like to sit there and make a resolution for the city to pass a white History Year, because everything, the architecture, this council that you're sitting in, designed by whites, it was designed by whites, the language we speak, we need a white History Year, not just a month, a year, year-round, every day, white fucking power.
All right, everyone, so here's what we're going to do. Thank you. Here's what we're going to do. It's the chair's prerogative for the order of the agenda. So at this time, I'm going to suspend public comment for item eight, and we're going to move it to the end of the agenda. So anyone who still has their hand up online, we will hear your public comment, but we will hear it after item 10A, which has been moved to after item 12B. So at this time, public comment for community comments and suggestions is suspended, and we'll hold that open until the end of item 12B, or excuse me, 10A. So with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. So for those of you following along, we're here. So without going through the formality, I will pull item 9D for separate consideration. So if you would have, first, I need to check in with council and see if there's anything else that anyone would like to pull. Okay, so we're going to take this separately, so we're going to get some items of business off the table here, and then we'll take item 9D separately, okay? So first, I'd like to open public comment for items 9A through 9F, exclusive of 9D. So everything but 9D. Would anyone like to comment on those items? Okay, hearing none, I'll check in online and see if anyone has comment on items 9A through 9F, not including 9D.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. They just lowered their hand. The first speaker is Brenton Tarrant. All right, Brenton, you are allowed to speak.
I just wanted to warn you guys that cutting people off is technically a sueable violation.
Sir, the public comment, the general public comment was moved to the end of the meeting. This is strictly on items 9A through 9F on the consent agenda, exclusive of 9D. So public comment, general public comment remains open. You received your three minutes to speak already on that item, so this is strictly for items 9A through 9F, exclusive of 9D only.
Okay, the next speaker on Zoom is Levi. Levi, you are allowed to speak now. Levi, can you unmute yourself? There we go.
I had my hand up for public comment, but you cut that already, so I'm going back. Sorry.
Levi, we can hear you.
I'm waiting for public comment. Sorry.
Yes, this is public comment-
No, he's waiting for general public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying.
General public comment.
Thank you for clarifying. There are no other raised hands.
All right, so we will close public comment on items 9A through 9F, and I'll bring it back to the council for discussion or action.
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval of items 9A through 9F on the consent agenda with the exception of 9D.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnish?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes. All right, so for item 9D, I've pulled this for obvious reasons, and that's because I'm guessing we're going to have a considerable amount of comment. So we will open up public comment in just a moment, and then the council will take its turn after we hear public comment, okay? So I want to just sort of refocus us and remind us that this is a public forum, but it does require decorum, and I require kindness. And while you have the First Amendment right to come up and speak about things that are within the purview of this council, please make sure that you keep it there so that we don't have to take the steps that we've taken earlier this evening. So I also want to remind you that sometimes the majority is on one side in these chambers, and sometimes the majority is the other group, and I don't know which is which tonight. I will hear as you come to the dais, but we want to make sure that every single person who comes up here feels welcome and able to speak. So let us please show everyone that courtesy. So with that, if you would like to speak on item 9D, please come on up. And if you could, it would be easier, please, please do, if you could make a line down the center so that we could just kind of keep it rolling. I have a feeling that we're going to have a fair amount of public comment this evening. So hold on just one moment. Okay, and so I know I asked you all to start moving, so there's a little talking going on, so as we're just about to get ready, we'll start your time once everybody quiets down and is able to hear you, okay? So crowd, if you would. Thank you so much. All right.
Hi, my name is Jules, and I'm a student at Cal Poly, and I would like to thank the entire council for your support of item 9D and the flying of the pride flag, because something that I know about being a student is that it can be very stressful, and that stress can be amplified when you're an LGBTQ student, because you are always going to be worried about how you're being perceived, because it can be a dangerous place. And something else I know about that is that when a teacher or a staff member on campus has a flag or something else in support of your identity, that can lessen the stress a lot. Because when you go into a classroom and you know that teacher is in support, you know that you're going to be, it's safe to be yourself, and you also know that if anything happens to you, then that teacher will be in support of you. And that can take so much stress off, and that is what I would consider a safe learning environment, when you're safe to learn because you're not stressed about all of these outside factors. And to prevent students from being able to have that experience of safety would be an act of injustice. And I know that for myself, over the years, I've probably been an LGBT student for about four years now, and I know that it means a lot of difference to me when I see staff in support of me and my identity. I know that means it's safe to be myself, and I know that I'm going to be protected from any discrimination that comes my way. Another thing that I know is that a pride flag has never groomed anyone, and you will be very hard-pressed to find any studies that prove that a pride flag has ever groomed anyone, because they don't exist, because it is a piece of cloth. And, but something else that I do know is that that flag, while it is a piece of cloth, it has a lot of symbolism, and it has a lot of meaning, and it does mean a lot to those who feel protected by it, who feel safe by it. And I hope that the council will continue to support legislation in support of flying the flag, and to think about those, the youth who are affected by it, elderly folk who are affected by it, everyone in between, because it means much more to us than I think people realize. And I would like to thank you all, and hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. My name is Yvonne Kendall, and I appreciate your time. And my cough is only asthma, not catching. I am speaking on behalf of flying the Pride Progress flag during the month of June, because the chevron added to the rainbow base representing the LGBTQ plus includes black, brown, light blue, pink, and white stripes to represent marginalized people of color, transgender people, those living with HIV/AIDS, and those who have been lost, especially related to the 1969 Stonewall riots. This will be the fourth year that AG has flown the pride flag, along with the cities of San Luis Obispo, Grover Beach, and a lot of other communities throughout California. There have been some arguments in the past, and even tonight, which I'd like to address here. Why not the Christian flag as an argument against? Well, for three reasons. Both our state and federal constitutions indicate that we are a pluralistic society, and because LGBTQ and/or belonging to any of the other groups previously stated are not religions. And three, in our country, we have separation of church and state. Another argument against has been, can we please hang a white pride flag? I believe that once white race, it's not really a race, becomes marginalized, we should consider it. And anyone, this is another objection, anyone who thinks that hanging the Pride Progress flag will consider that the city would be promoting sexual acts, I can't even define it. Hanging the flag would be un-American. I disagree. Showing love, support, and compassion is one of the hallmarks of our great society. I am in support of hanging the Pride Progress flag for the following reasons. No one chooses to be gay or brown-skinned or otherwise marginalized. We owe it to the community to support people who are not as privileged as many of the white community naturally are. This can contribute to our tax base. Can you consider businesses that might not come to AG because we don't support this? That's pretty important to me. Now, let's look at the demographics of the city. You know, I figured it out, if there's 1,600, 16,500 people, and about 22% are not white, and then look at the California population, at 9.1% people identify as LGBTQ plus, then we're looking at about 5,000 people in this city who we can be affecting. That's almost a quarter of our population here. So what we're saying to my friends and family is, we see you and we support you. It's, I've got 30 seconds.
No, I'm sorry. We have to, we have to respect everybody in the same way. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right.
Okay. Hi.
It's okay, don't be afraid to speak.
Hi, my name is Milo. I am the co-president of AGHS's GSA. I have been co-president for three years now. Was, is it four? Three years now. When the pride flag went up for Pride Month, it was honestly very shocking to our community, but everybody was so happy. Everybody was so happy to be seen, to be heard, as a trans person in this community in AG. It's been really difficult growing up, being trans, and it's been extremely harsh as someone who's been a participant in the church, as well as the community in general. Our community, the AGHS GSA, is very, is very happy to have your support in flying the Progress flag, and we are all very thankful for what you guys are doing for us. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Thank you, council and mayor. I just want to say I really appreciate the fact that you guys did both proclamations today that were near and dear to my heart, public servants and mental health. I happen to be a county mental health therapist and have been one for 28 years. It has been a challenging journey, but a very rewarding one. It is very difficult to hear from all sorts of people, the pain and the trauma that they suffer, from everything, from trauma histories, from racism, from poverty. It just runs the gamut. And so I am very thankful that you've made both of those proclamations. And I would like to suggest, propose perhaps, having another proclamation in support of suicide awareness and the 988 Suicide Prevention Hotline. I don't know if you have something similar to that, but I think it would be super important. We have so many people who are just on the edge right now. There's a national mental health care provider shortage, there is definitely one in this area. We are struggling to find enough therapists, psychologists, and psychiatrists to treat the people that need it, and most particularly, those who do not have private health insurance. So that is one thing I wanted to speak to. The other thing is that I appreciate everybody in this room expressing their opinions, but I particularly appreciate those who are trying very hard to be respectful and loving and kind towards others, and would like to suggest that that is really a more helpful way to speak to each other, to the council, and to any other political body or organization that allows us to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve. I just want to say I have really no problem with the pride flag, just as long as it is not on city property. I think it's easy for someone to hang a pride flag outside their house. That's their prerogative. But there's a reason why there are two flags behind you tonight. A state flag and a US flag. There's a reason why we all stood and pledged allegiance to the flag. There's a real good reason why, because those flags stand and incorporate every right that someone who is in some other group is seeking to have and to experience. And I think the city of Arroyo Grande should be not involved in this issue. I believe it divides us. It does not unite us. And that flag up there is something that does unite us. So my encouragement would be not to fly that pride flag. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gene Quail. I'll keep my statement brief. I would like to encourage the council members to continue to fly the pride flag. I want to live in a community where everyone is welcome. In fact, if you do not continue to fly the pride flag, would you not be really endorsing the opinions of the opposing people and want to discriminate against people because of their sexual orientation? That's not the community I want to live in. So I encourage you to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, council members, Ms. Mayor, staff, thank you. I'm Kara Woodruff, and I serve as a district director for Senator John Laird, who represents the 17th Senate District, including all of San Luis Obispo County. As a resident, okay, as a 30-plus-year resident of San Luis Obispo, I am visiting my neighborhood city to express my support for consent item 9D to authorize a display of all three proposed commemorative flags for Military Appreciation Month, Juneteenth, and LGBTQ Pride Month. My beloved father was a veteran of the Korean War and recently passed away at age 94. So the Military Appreciation Month flag means a lot to me and my family, to all veterans and to Americans. The Juneteenth flag commemorates the day when 250,000 slaves in the state of Texas were declared free by the US Army after the end of the Civil War. This flag should mean everything to everyone who cherishes freedom and equal rights. As for the pride flag, I want to tell a little story. My oldest and best friend, who is one of the world's best humans, honestly, in terms of her kindness, generosity, and positive outlook, is a lesbian woman, and she came out over three decades ago while in her 20s. It was not easy for her. I was there. I witnessed the challenges she faced and the extremely unkind treatment she received by many of those around her. But the pride flag helped her through this difficult time. I talked to her just today, and she told me that this is still true. 35 years later, and as a 59-year-old woman, when she sees the pride flag being flown, she still today feels more included, more accepted, and safer. So thank you, city of Arroyo Grande, for this gift of the proposed commemorative flags to veterans, to Black Americans, to LGBTQ plus people, and to everyone who values selfless service, freedom, equality, and kindness. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Adam Passion. I am a native of Arroyo Grande, a father of three, grandson of a Filipino immigrant farmer, and a recently out gay man that came out late as a result, in part, of the suppression of the identity of this community in Arroyo Grande. So I'll preface this statement by saying that those demonstrating against the commemoration of this flag, that we don't, we exist in your community irrespective of that suppression. We aren't going anywhere, and we are equally human and equally Arroyo Grande citizens irrespective of the efforts to suppress the representation of LGBTQI plus people. So we're not seeking to degrade the existence or the integrity of the American flag, nor the existence of hetero or white or Christian identity or any of those things. We need and value the support of those persons in our community to reach equity for LGBTQI persons in our community. So based on public comment tonight, we can allow it to speak for itself, really. Unlike comments advocating for hatred or white power, we're not here to hate anyone. We're here to respectfully request equitable representation for this community. We are seeking Arroyo Grande's support in recognizing and valuing the contributions of LGBTQI persons and the allies as an integral part of our beautiful community. We are asking that Arroyo Grande not only continue to support flying the commemorative flag, but export the, support the expansion of pride commemoration events in our community in the future, as well as the additional opportunities to advocate for more visibility of this community. And, you know, I just say, as we stated in this, earlier this evening, as a country that proclaims liberty and justice for all, we're accountable to that commitment. We're accountable to, to speaking and advocating for this community. So we're just asking that you sustain a stance of support and equity for the community, both in flag representation and for the city's continued support of additional pride opportunities, the expansion of those. So I want to thank you so much for hearing my comments tonight, and we just ask for your continued support in, really just advocating for humanity and belonging for all people like me here. Thank you.
It's a good time to, I should have said this at the beginning because we might have some beginner speakers. There is a timer on the podium, so please keep your eye on it. There's a green light. When it goes to yellow, that means you have thirty seconds left. So if you would please keep your eye on that, because I am going to hold you to three minutes, as you've seen. All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rusum and city council members. I'm Gina Whitaker. I've lived in Arroyo Grande since nineteen eighty-one. My two sons were raised in Arroyo Grande and attended local public schools. I wish to voice my strong support for displaying the progress pride flag during the month of June at our city hall. I'm a longtime ally and activist for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender folks' rights and considerations. I've been very proud to have lived here over the past forty-three years and to know that our city leaders are sensitive to the needs and safety of members of our LGBTQ plus populations. June is traditionally a month given to celebrating the pride felt by the members of the LGBTQ plus communities. When I see the pride flag waving over our city hall, I'm reminded that diversity is our strength, and Arroyo Grande civic leaders are making a statement of inclusivity and generosity of spirit. Please continue to fly the flags that symbolize the value of gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender people, as well as many, many other people whose sexuality or identity may not easily fit into a specific category. These are our neighbors, our laborers, our teachers, our firefighters, our police, our, you know, everybody, our friends. These are people who contribute time, money, and powerful ideas to the function of our city and our communities. Please do not leave anyone out in the celebration of who we are this year or in any subsequent years. Thank you very much.
Do I press a button? Oh, period.
I am amazed by the amount of people here today, amazed by the love, amazed by the hate. Hello, council.
My name's Janine Santos, and coming from a family of immigrants, I am deeply American. My grandfather served in a war to bring my family here, and I'm really dedicated to bringing the love and community from the Philippines to here where I live. The queer community in Slow County is the closest I've ever got to that feeling of pure love and family and community that feels like home. Whenever I feel attacked, whenever I feel hate, whenever someone wants to erase my queer, trans existence, I can lean on the love around me in this room. Thank you. I want to thank you, council, for recognizing queer existence. I want to thank you for showing that hate is in the minority.
So there is one thing that the, both the American and the pride flag represent to me as a transgender person when I'm walking around, enjoying life in this community. Before I go into that, I must say, this is about the time that my grandfather would step out of the bathroom and say, okay, where were we again? And there was one story where I recall he had taken the life of a Vietnamese soldier, and he would tear up in front of me and would tell me that death and hate was never really worth it. There, a while ago, there was a student in London who was stabbed to death. Her name was Brianna Jai, and she was a transgender, transgender person, individual, who had a loving and caring heart. And what they found in the courtroom was the assailant's planning the murder. One of them had wanted to know if she had screamed like a boy or a girl. And that, to me, it scares me. I feel afraid walking around the, the parks, Grand Avenue. I feel afraid for my life sometimes, because it is true that those people who see us as evil could and maybe be incentivized to do something. I don't want that. I know nobody here wants violence. And if I were to get stabbed to death, if I were to die, that flag being raised would remind me that the council here and the county as a whole wouldn't let my death go unnoticed. And that, that is hopeful. Thank you.
My name's Chris Burzbach, resident of Arroyo Grande at five thirty-seven May Street. I came here tonight just to thank the council for continuing to support the recurring annual display of commemorative flags at city hall and Heritage Square Park. Unfortunately, when council adopted a similar resolution last year, there was some controversy from a thankfully small but loud number of folks expressing opposition to display the pride flag during June, which is Pride Month, as we all know here. My response to that opposition was to add a second flag display to my home so that I could put up commemorative flags like the progress pride flag alongside my American flag. I want to do what I can to make sure that our LGBT and transgender community members see the love and support around their community. So I just wanted to thank council for supporting this tonight.
Hi, it's me again. I'm, like I said, a member of the AGHS high school community. I am also the leader of the school Young Progressives Club. And I wanted to start by just mentioning that we're talking a lot about LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus. I feel it's important to mention that it's not just everyone who is lesbian, gay, transgender, pansexual, non-binary. It's a lot of other people who you may not have even realized are part of the LGBTQ plus community, not just neurodivergent people like me. I'm also asexual. And there are plenty of people who are walking down the street every day, who you will walk past, who look quite normal, and you might think, oh, hey, that's Joe Bob or whoever. And you may not realize, they're aromantic. That's why they live alone with their cats, because those cats are their life. I also want to address the fact that there's been a lot of discussions about the American flag and how that symbolizes equality. Let's be honest, that American flag has been used to justify a lot of horrific things, from genocides during Westward expansion and Manifest Destiny, to the forced sterilization of mentally ill people and hundreds of thousands of migrants coming up from the southern border in the early twentieth century. But it's also been used to justify a lot of really based things. I mean, come on, we ended slavery, destroyed the Confederate States of America, and kicked Adolf Hitler in the balls. Come on, that's awesome, and that flag justified it. But let's also be real, the pride flag shows who we are as a people. I know we've had a lot of talk about white power and all this other crap. Come on, there's so much that we see, AKA, the American flag, that symbolizes white dudes, because, come on, a bunch of white dudes made that. But we don't see a lot of gay people who have made flags, who have shown their mark on history that we talk about in public education. We also don't talk about a lot of other characters in history who were LGBTQ plus. For instance, there was a Roman emperor, I believe it was Marcus Aurelius. He was a trans woman. This stuff has been going on for millennia, not just some fad from the twentieth century, millennia. I mean, even people who believe that evolution started a couple thousand years ago, guess what? That's millennia. And come on, if this stuff has been going on for longer than any of us, why should we now decide, eh, let's not acknowledge it, let's shove them back in the closet? White people aren't in the closet, so why should the LGBTQ plus community be in the closet? They're there. This is something they are born with, and this is something we need to accept is expressed. And it is my hope that we express it outside of city hall, as well as in the comfort of our own homes. Thank you.
My comment will be short, but as a citizen of Arroyo Grande, I wanted to add my voice in support of flying the LGBTQ plus flag. My name is Kimberly, a returning student who went to Questa College, and I just transferred to Cal Poly. I'll be graduating in June with a biological sciences degree. I came to California in twenty sixteen in search of acceptance, compassion, community, and progress, things California is known for across the world. Too often, this county reminds me of what I fled. It made me feel proud of my city to see this motion of support and to see how the community has shown up in support of acceptance and compassion. I hope to see this progress continue through, I hope to see this progress continue through the expansion of support for LGBTQ plus people and other marginalized groups. I represent Arroyo Grande. We represent Arroyo Grande. Will you represent us? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us. I am speaking today to express my concern over the fact that your representatives are again choosing to fly a flag that distinctly represents the endorsement of a particular sexual lifestyle choice that is made by a few people, but not all people. Please reconsider this decision and do not vote to make this decision perpetual, because that would take the right of us to appear before you each year and express our opinion on it away. As people, we have the right to come to you, and yet, last year, I wrote to object to this, along with many others, and yet, you chose to fly the flag anyway. But I do appreciate the opportunity to come here again and be heard, and also to write letters. Public display of this flag is inappropriate in this public setting, since it indicates that the citizens, all the citizens of our city endorse this behavior, which is not the case, for myself, my family, and many other residents. I have heard that one of the reasons you want to do this is to take a stand for an underrepresented and historically persecuted group of people. I agree with wanting to help people, but in this free nation, we currently have the freedom to behave how we choose, as long as we do not harm others. If someone is mistreated, then the recourse to address this injustice already exists through the police and the courts, standing on the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. The nation's flag, Old Glory, the Stars and Stripes, already represents these rights. The only flags that should fly from our city poles are the American flag, the California state flag, and our city's flag. These three more than represent all of us by standing for the governments of our free nation, state, and town. No more flags need to be flown, especially not one that has nothing to do with an actual body of governance. I'm the daughter of a Vietnam veteran who sadly passed away on Sunday. I do appreciate the fact that you want to fly a veteran flag, but the fact that it's going to fly along with flags that have to do with something dramatically different than what he stood for, what he suffered for years in Vietnam and the aftereffects of Agent Orange, that's not the same as a lifestyle choice. So I'd rather see you not fly the Vietnam flag or any service flag if you're going to choose to fly this flag. This flag represents a lifestyle. It doesn't represent men going and dying in representation of their country. I thank you for hearing me.
Sorry for your loss, Shannon.
My name is Dave Pomeroy. I'm in favor of the flag ordinance. I'm proud of the city council. I'm proud of the city, and I think we should do this in, in, in the interest of welcoming people and being inclusive. Thank you very much.
Patty Welsh, I too am in favor of hanging this flag. My husband, I'm sorry for your loss, ma'am, my husband was also a Vietnam vet, and he fought for this country to give everyone an equal opportunity. I was lucky, I went to school with Martin Luther King's kids shortly after he was murdered. I had great opportunity to try to better myself along the way, and I feel by being inclusive and hanging this flag, it includes all, and I think that's a good thing. My little sister lives in Georgia. She happens to be bisexual. She had to move in order to keep her job as a special ed teacher. Because she is married to a woman, I just feel there's something wrong. We need more teachers in this world, and we need a lot more special ed teachers. And why people want to exclude these people from their lives or anyone from their life is beyond me. Hang the flag. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julia Vogue, native of the area, born and raised. I'm wearing a shirt for an organization called Free Mom Hugs that I support, which exists because there are pride events where there are so many people who did not feel loved and supported in their homes and communities, and they go to pride events and they fill that community, and they literally just want a hug from a mom, because they've been turned out from their own families or they didn't feel that support. Flying the flag, the pride flag, shows that our community does support people who identify as LGBTQ plus. I am a woman, married to a man, for better or worse, who is in his twenty-fifth year of service in the US Army, which I normally don't bring up because I don't speak for him, and I don't feel that his service is something that I'm entitled to get credit for. However, I know he did write in an email tonight in support of the flag flying as well, so I bring that up in relevance only to say that I have also seen firsthand over the years, members of the military service of all ranks who are also members of the LGBTQ community, and they do fight for our country, and they do fight for our freedom to be here, and they don't always feel safe enough to acknowledge their wholeness and who they are. And it may seem silly to some, or it may seem irrelevant, but flying the flag, really, the pride flag, along with the pride flag, along with the US flag, really does send an important message, and it goes a long way. And I thank you for doing that in the past, I hope you will continue to do it, as I think to stop now would send a very strong and painful message to many people. And I appreciate you taking the time to, uh, hear us and read the comments sent in. Thank you.
Hi. First, I want to thank you so much. You guys have been amazing, calm, and so supportive of everybody, so thank you. I'm straight, I just want to say that because there's a lot of straight, uh, support for this as well. Seeing the pride flag fly in our tiny village is a visual declaration that AG is a safe, welcoming place for the LGBTQ AI community, and the bigotry has no place here. As we are all aware, that community has historically, and to this day, been marginalized, bullied, disallowed, and attacked. The current attempts to render them invisible by trying to remove protections, the right to marry, and even literature from our national awareness is shameful. I think, I thank the city council for flying the flag in past years, and I really hope you guys will continue to do so. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is, uh, Patrick. I've been a resident of Arroyo Grande for about eight years now, and I came out here to say that the pride flag symbolizes a lot of people, but not everyone. The Arroyo Grande flag symbolizes every resident of Arroyo Grande. California flag does the same for California, and the United States flag symbolizes every United States citizen. Therefore, it makes sense that we would fly those flags outside of buildings paid for by the taxpayers, because they represent everyone. The pride flag, which does not represent everyone, should not be flown on a, on a building that is paid for by everyone. And that's all I have to say for right now. Thank you for doing this, by the way.
I've been thinking a lot about my relationship to flags today. I have a weird relationship with the American flag in particular, in that when I was in school, I think elementary school, saying the pledge every day, I suddenly realized, hey, wait a second, I'm a minor, why am I pledging allegiance? I, there's no way I know enough to do, do this kind of thing, I can't even sign a simple contract. So, I know I've had a very different experience when it comes to pride flags. You don't pledge allegiance to pride flags, but also, in the asexual community, at least the parts that I've been in, there are a whole lot of pride flags. You're encouraged to go figure out what fits you best, rather than what, uh, happens to be the, be what you're supposed to align with. And, you know, there are a lot of people who don't share the flag that they associate the most strongly with. And for me, I think that says something important. The pride flag may not represent everyone, but it does represent the ability to choose. It does represent that self-determination. You are who you are and who you want to say you are. And that, I think, is something that is important to think about when you're thinking about whether or not the flag represents you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rin Leonard. Uh, I am a member of this community, I have lived in this, uh, town, in this area, my entire life, since I was born. And I can say that I have seen through me and through my, uh, older queer sibling, the effect that this community and the growing acceptance and understanding of queer identities has had on, at least even just my family, much less the community as a whole. And I know that for me and a lot of other queer youth, being able to look at our town and look at our city council areas, just all across town and everything, being able to look and see that we are an accepted part of this community, that we are acknowledged and known about, and that everyone is welcome, is something that is unmatched by any other feeling. I'm in support of it, I'm obviously sorry. Yeah, I, it would be greatly appreciated by me and a lot of other members of this community for this flag to be flown. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Heather Bonner. I am a practically lifelong resident of Arroyo Grande. I graduated from Arroyo Grande High School with pride. I currently have a junior in the high school who will also graduate with pride. As a lifelong member, I have always remembered that Arroyo Grande has been inclusive and accepting of who I am. And, um, sorry, I didn't prepare anything, I'm just speaking from the heart here. But the pride flag is about inclusivity. Hanging the pride flag shows that Arroyo Grande is an inclusive town, where I can be proud to raise my children, and proud to say that this is my hometown. I am in support of hanging the pride flag. Thank you, and all the other flags.
Hi, I'm Bob Miller, and I, uh, live in Arroyo Grande, have lived here for many years. Uh, I served in the military for a number of years, and I have, and stand to this day on this flag. When I was in school, I pledged allegiance virtually every morning in class to the United States flag. And I think that we should continue to carry the United States flag as the prime flag of the United States.
Hi, I am Karen M- uh, Miller, and, um, I have been here over sixty years, so I'm a real dinosaur in the area. And I'm very proud to be an Arroyo Grande citizen, and, uh, I am, one, when you came up last year, I first found out about the vote on the flag, and I said, you know, we need to be just flying only the US flag, the California flag, and the city of, of Arroyo Grande, to be all inclusive of everybody, and to not show favoritism. And again, this year, when it came up, I had to come up and speak and say the same thing. Last year, I did not get a chance to speak with all of you, but I did get in a letter expressing my concern. That way, there's no favoritism, we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi y'all, my name is Eli Osborne, and I grew up here in Slow County, originally from North County, and then I moved away for a little bit, and then came back here to live in South County. I am here in support of flying the pride flag, because California is known for being very progressive. I studied, um, gender, sexuality, equity, and, um, as one of my majors. And for one of my classes was California LGBTQ plus history. During that class, I noticed that San Luis Obispo County didn't have anything under it. And I think it is a very unjust thing that we were never seen as one of the places that had some major LGBTQ plus win. And even though the flag is a very small way to show our support, we should still fly it to show that we are supporting LGBTQ plus individuals. I work with homeless youth, and I work within the homeless management information system, and one of the questions we ask is, why did you move here? One of the answers is for acceptance of sexuality and gender identity. So I believe that it's very important that we show our support for LGBTQ plus individuals. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nate McDonald. I've lived here for about three years, and I'm a junior in high school right now, and I'm in support of flying the pride flag. Uh, I think there's been a lot of conversation about the symbolism of flags as a topic in general, but I think this specific issue is not really a matter of politics. I think it's instead deeply important to declare that this community is a safe space for a marginalized group of people. Uh, personally, I, as a member of the community, feel much safer seeing it. The pride flag represents and protects a group of people which have been very historically marginalized, which is much more important than any political or, uh, national sort of identity, I think, in this case, because we're, we need to protect our people. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vida Miller. I'm not a resident of this community, I'm from La Sosa, but I felt compelled to come out here. I don't think I can say as eloquently as a lot of these young people have about what flying the pride flag means to them, um, but I do know, I do want to speak to the issue of, uh, people in the military. My father-in-law was in World War II, my husband is a world, is a Vietnam vet era, uh, veteran of the US Air Force. They did not serve their country to see people marginalized, they did not serve their country to see people rejected by a community. They served their country to, for democracy, for all, for acceptance of all, and that's what the pride flag means, as far as I'm concerned. It means that we are all accepted, and everyone has equal rights, and that's what their, that's what their duty was all about. About six years ago, my grandson, who's now twenty, no, excuse me, it's eight years ago, he's twenty-four now, came out to me. Uh, he lived in a community that was fairly conservative, he did not feel safe coming out in that community. Uh, this is not in California, but he came out to California, and he came out to me. And I felt, he knew that I would not reject him, he knew that I would accept him for who he is, and he has found his way, and he has found accepting communities now, and so, a thing like the pride flag means an awful lot to him. So please, please agree to fly the, the flag, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dave, and you'll like what I have to say, cause I'm gonna be brief. I was reading the original resolution 5083, where all this began a few years ago, and I caught the words there that this, um, flying these commemorative flags is done as an expression of the city council's sentiments. That's something that you put into that resolution. So I'm gonna appeal to your sentiments. You, I believe, should represent the people of this community. I don't think having forty or fifty people come up here to this podium and say whatever they're gonna say, represents a very good poll of that. I think you need to table this issue, do a decent polling of the community as to how they feel, and then move forward after you've done that. This really smacks of the feeling of a partisan issue, uh, more than anything else. I don't think anybody is wanting to hurt or do anything to anybody, it's just the idea of, does it really represent our community and what, and what we feel? And I would ask you to do a fair poll in that way. Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Lily Norcross. Uh, I am a part of the LGBTQ community, and I believe it is important to fly this flag, because it shows acceptance towards the community. And even this is just flying it for one month, that's one twelfth of the year. I believe that in this community, they're, one twelfth of the community is part of the LGBTQ community. I believe that that would be equal representation of the community.
I don't like public speaking. That is my daughter, and I couldn't be more proud of my daughter. I grew up in AG, Karen, I graduated a year after you did. We've moved back, been back in the area for a number of years now. I always considered myself an ally before my daughter came out to us. You have no idea what it means. It is rough out there for these kids in the, in this community. Flying this flag shows support to a community that doesn't have it. Please fly the flag.
Hi, my name's Jamie. I remember when I emailed you four years ago to get the flag to fly, and I was really grateful for your response, um, and getting it going. Four years ago, there was hardly, there weren't a lot of people who called in that day, and so, I'm actually really excited to see everyone here who has come to voice their thoughts or their opinions. As a member of the community, a resident of AG, I'm a teacher, I have children, a wife, we've built a life and a home here. It does feel safer when the flag flies, and there's a sense of pride that comes with it. And I get a little emotional, but you realize how many shoulders you stand on, and I think I'm, just as a older adult, I'm in a different place, and I would actually really love for some sort of community program. I would love to donate my time to have coffee or tea with anybody who would like to talk about this. And if anybody's walking down Grand and they don't feel safe, I'll give you my number and I'll come pick you up. Because we have not felt safe here as well. But the flag does feel safe, it doesn't matter where you go. We've had our flag stolen twice off our home, and it doesn't feel good, cause it's right by one of my daughter's windows, and it brings out this certain amount of, um, mama bear, and you wanna find that person. So then we went to the RuPaul Drag Race this last year, but we couldn't just go have, like, a parents' night out with fun. We had to walk through these, this group of people who were calling us, I won't say the names, but they also had it written down on, um, signs, and I couldn't help it, I asked, do you want to steal my flag? I think it was one of you. And when I called that in to the AG police, um, they asked, well, how much was it? Because they can't document anything if it's not over a certain amount. It was like, twenty-five dollars? So I think that's a loophole, when you wanna talk about incidents in AG, how they are recorded and how they're not. It was not a certain amount, so it couldn't be recorded. They don't know how to help you when you say, I think that's a hate crime. They don't know. Have I appreciated assistance from our police department in other things? Absolutely. I don't think they do it on purpose, I think that's just a hole that we have. But, um, yeah, I would personally donate my time to discuss, or help.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jay Bird. Thank you so much, city council and mayor, for, uh, being here tonight. Um, I wasn't going to speak, but I was very much moved as I was listening to all of our community members, and I just wanted to share that, um, I am a lifelong local of Slow County. I was born at Sierra Vista, my older sister was one of the last babies born at the, uh, Slow General Hospital, uh, just to give you a little age range there, and, um, and I was born and raised in North County, Slow County, Paso Robles, and Atascadero, and when I speak publicly, and I do very frequently speak on LGBTQ rights, and, um, speak out on behalf of me, um, when I speak, I frequently bring up the fact that I was closeted for most of my life, because I was born and raised in North County. And I didn't feel safe being out and being me, and I was raised by people that told me that if I was my true self, that I should would, th- that I was worth a lesser than them, let's just say that. So, um, I share all of that to say, a couple years ago, I bought my very first property, my very first home in Arroyo Grande. And I'm so excited as a first-time homeowner to say that I am also a resident of Arroyo Grande, and that was also the same year that the pride flag was flown here locally, and it meant so much to me to come home. So thank you very much for your consideration, and I do hope to see that flag continue to fly.
How's it going? My name's Jason, and I actually don't usually speak either, but why not? When I look at our American flag, right there, I look at a symbol where every detail on that flag means something. Everything, the number of stars, the colors, you can look up everything. It was carried into battle, it was blown over Iwo Jima, it's been bled on, it represents the rights of everybody, equal protection under God and under the law. And that's not something- And that's not something that's common in the world. There's a lot of flags out there that don't represent that, but ours does. It doesn't mean we've always done great things as a country. Someone before said we've, I don't know, genocide, whatever. A lot of -- it doesn't. It represents, however, it represents that continuous drive to do what is right. That's why we defeated slavery. That's why we had the civil rights movement. That's why we overcame. That flag represents us today, and it represents what we're going to be. It is the most inclusive symbol we have, and it's been bled on, bled for. It's been burned. It's been raised as a symbol of pride, and I've seen it desecrated in the streets. But it represents all of us. It is our equality. I don't know what the pride flag represents. It's changed. It's got a lot of colors. It's got new colors. And someone got up here and said something. They said LGBTQ plus, okay? The pride flag to me represents, whereas that represents equality for all, equality of persons. I see the pride flag, and I think equality of behaviors with no limit, because there's a plus. And I don't think anyone on the city council can tell me what might be envisioned by that plus. I think we have ideas. We know it's a problem, but there's no one speaking out about it. There's no clear, this is what it stands for. The Constitution and our laws and everything that built that flag right there, we know very clearly what it stands for. But we don't know what the other flag stands for. We know what its current form is, but we don't know what its future form's going to be. And when we put something like that up there, we're accepting the plus. And I guarantee you, there's a lot of us in this community, there's a lot of us in this council, there's a lot of us in this room, LGBT included, that don't accept behaviors that are included and growing in that plus. So, from the perspective of a citizen and a longtime resident of this city, I believe that the only thing that belongs in front of a city building that represents our government is our United States flag, our state flag, and our city flag. And if that doesn't represent all of us, then we have a problem. And it's not going to be solved by adding an appendix to the flag. And that's all I've got. Thanks for the time.
Hello, my name is Anthony Page. I was inspired by this previous gentleman. His speech I found was very interesting. He said that the American flag had a symbol for, had a whole bunch of meaning. Everything that is on the American flag means something. So does the LGBTQ flag. It means lesbian, gay, transgender, and queer people. He also said that the American flag has been led into battle. So has the LGBTQ flag into protests and into the, into tear gas and rubber bullets from police officers over a long history of state repression. He said that the American flag is the most inclusive flag that we have. I say no. I say the LGBTQ flag is the most inclusive flag that we have. The public, this is a public place. That is a public flag. The public wishes for the LGBTQ flag to be flown, so the LGBTQ flag should be flown. Thank you very much.
My name is Ace Corcelia, and to be honest, I've been debating coming up here to talk. But after everything that's been said, I would like to add my piece. As a member of the LGBTQI community, seeing that flag be flown even just last year felt like, I don't know, some kind of acceptance in a nation where across a lot of it, it's becoming less safe for people like me and even just myself to exist. Seeing that the city council and seeing that the city stands with people like me and stands with our ability to exist as ourselves made me feel significantly safer in the city and makes me proud to call myself a citizen of Arroyo Grande. Thank you.
We've got to stop meeting like this. Good evening, Council. Again, Dusty Collierworth, Executive Director of the Gala Pride and Diversity Center of the Central Coast. I had a lot of things I thought about saying, so I will try my best to keep it simple as well. I'm here obviously in support of flying all three commemorative flags that are part of this, especially recognizing our military and our veterans, many of which who served under the policies of "Don't Ask, Don't Tell," a law that was represented by that American flag while they rode into battle to preserve it and advance it. Juneteenth, recognizing the triumphs of and freedom of spirit for our Black community that still live within these American borders that were not represented by that American flag when they were first introduced into this nation. And lastly, of our LGBTQ, our pride flag. There's a lot of things I can say about that. They've been said so much better, especially by many that are so much younger than me. I grew up, lifelong resident of this county. I did not come out until I left this county because I did not feel safe to do so. So to see especially so many of our youth that are empowered not only to say, "I want that symbol that represents me flown by the government that represents me," is especially impactful to know that we are on the road to progress. And so I do recognize and honor the position that you are in as public servants, because it is not easy. It is not easy to make the right choices in advancing diversity, equity, inclusion. Then those are not bad words. Those are the words that our nation was actually founded on. So to say anything against diversity, equity, and inclusion is actually one of the most un-American things you could probably announce to the room. I would also say, much of our opposition takes some of their confirmation bias from known hate group web pages, and will try to peddle that as fact. Tra la. At the end of the day, the pride flag next to our American flag is the symbol that it is. It is a symbol of hope. And until such a time as the entire community does feel represented by that flag, please continue to fly the flags that support those community members.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arlen. I'm a student at AGHS. I'd like to thank you for letting us all speak. Sorry, I don't have anything prepared, but I just want to say that I know a lot of my friends, hold on, I'm going to, okay. I'm a member of the GSA club at my school, and almost all of my friends have experienced hate for being queer inside and outside of school. It really means a lot that you guys would raise a pride flag. I'm in support of raising the pride flag and the other flags that are, would be raised as well. A little anecdote, my best friend passed away over seven months ago, and I often wonder if they had more support available to them, if things would have turned out differently. So it really means a lot to me that there are so many people that support making like the queer community more visible in our community. So thank you very much.
Gaya Powell again. So the commemorative flag that would actually honor and commemorate pride and what it stands for, the community that is mostly sitting behind me, to have their rights, that every person has equal rights no matter what their sexual orientation is. I support that 1,000%. And if anyone wants to hang any flag on their private property, they should do so. The issue tonight is that certain flags shouldn't hang on public property or city property. So I really appreciate everyone sharing their personal stories and views this evening, but I hope all in this room have a clear understanding of the intent of the city council and the city staff's presented flag resolution. Our leaders are attempting to manipulate a government speech doctrine, as that gentleman mentioned earlier, I agree with him, defined by the US Supreme Court that allows a government organization to advance its own expression so long as it does not show preference or to a creed, religion, which is an ideology, or represents a political view. Driven by personal beliefs and biases and some of your support of sexual indoctrination of Arroyo Grande's children, from my view, those who are engaged in this unethical deceptive tactic that manipulates the intent of the United States Supreme Court's doctrine should consider resigning. Some of you think you're very clever by proposing this resolution that sandwiches the LGBTQ flag, which is not this flag, the pride flag, which it presents, it represents a creed and/or ideology. You're sandwiching it between two legitimate commemorative flags. And as the other person had mentioned, there's always a plus at the end. So what's that flag going to end up looking like? And what will it actually stand for? It constantly seems to be changing. So anyway, I really think it's unfortunate that our leadership has chosen to manipulate a Supreme Court doctrine in order to push their own biases or ramrod their own personal ideology down our throats. As I had mentioned earlier, I had shown you the LGBTQ child pornography that's in AG High School. None of you spoke out in opposing of that, which to me is disgusting. So this has nothing to do with any of the people in this room. All of these people should have, you know, should be loved and accepted, and I hope that our community will hang, you know, the pride flag during the month of June.
Thank you.
But it doesn't belong in our city property.
My name is Scott Thompson, resident of AG for about, on and off, three or four years. I did not intend to speak, but I can't let hate and bigotry get the last word. And if the others I can count, there's more of us than there are of them, so.
All right. So at this time, we're going to go to online commentary. And those of you who are still here, comment, public comment is not closed. So if you are inspired to speak after online commentary, you are welcome to if you have not already spoken. So the public comment is not closed for here. I'm just going to go ahead and go online. And I'm also going to ask, yes. What? And before we do that, we are being begged for a bathroom break. So I'm not sure if you know, but the city council are human beings, and so we'll just go ahead and take a quick five-minute break. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you so much. All right. So we are back and where we left off was in the middle of public comment. And we're going to go ahead and turn it over to the city clerk and potentially others to go to online commentary.
Okay, we have a number of raised hands. If anyone on Zoom would like to make a comment on item 9D, please raise your hand. Our first speaker will be Greg Dutton, followed by Gabe Stutman. Greg, you're able to speak.
Hey, everyone. My name is Greg Dutton, and I'm sorry for doing this virtually, but I'm watching a friend's pet while he and his wife are deployed in their duties with the US Army. I've written down a few words, so I don't mince them. I support our city in flying a pride flag. Since you can't see me, I want to start off by explaining who I am in terms of credentials that seem to matter to the people protesting against our LGBTQ friends and neighbors. I'm a straight white man. I support gun rights and I support legitimate fiscal responsibility in government. I own a home in Arroyo Grande. I pay my taxes, support our local economy, and put in effort to make AG a great place to live. And for some reason, the people have decided it's very important today. I'm also a UMS Army combat veteran. I also have great veteran benefits, and somebody mentioned that earlier. What I'm not is a person who will tolerate hate. I was taught, like many of the people who are on both sides of this topic, to love thy neighbor. I cannot accept that a member, any, that members of my community want to demonize our LGBTQ community. Everyone who lives in AG should feel as welcome and accepted as I do. There would be so much room for improvement before that can be reality. Not to be too sappy, but I went to war with the thought that I was making my home safer and better for people who live there. But it might work in the community. I've seen that even wonderful places like AG are not safer and better for those who aren't basically in my near exact phenotype. My LGBTQ friends are wonderful people. The protest leaders call them groomers, and the angry hateful people try to demonize them. The leader tries to use hate to further their political aspirations. And while these haters do things like organize protests, my LGBTQ friends only try to seek out safety and acceptance and find human connection with people their age, I might add. They're shocked to someone who looks like the people they've been taught to be frightened of, a straight white guy, a veteran, a straight-laced man, would be complacent of them, let alone befriend them. And I've made some really wonderful friends. A lot of them are there tonight. These people don't feel safe in our community because of people like the protesters who make up lies and spread evil propaganda against them. It's because of that that I say it's in fact our duty to fly a pride flag and let our LGBTQ friends and neighbors know that they are safe and loved. The people of Arroyo Grande are good and loving people, and the hateful protesters and political aspirants do not represent us. A pride flag enhances the veteran flag. To this veteran, please adopt the resolution to fly the proposed flags. Arroyo Grande is not the place to stage culture wars against our beloved community members. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Gabe. And Gabe, you're allowed to speak now.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gabe Stutman. I am a Jewish man, and I just wanted to speak in favor of the pride flag being displayed. I want everyone who comes to Arroyo Grande to know that we love butt sex, and we love sucking dick, and we love AIDS.
Commenter, this is the city attorney. Please limit your comments to the specific item of city business under consideration, and that is whether or not the city should fly a series of commemorative flags. This is a warning, hateful speech that doesn't have to do with the item under consideration is not relevant to this agenda item.
So anyway, I was speaking directly to the, to the butt sex flags. I wanted to also share some stats about the homosexual community. Again, I'm a gay Jewish man. And it feels my duty to, to warn the younger generation of, you know, just what they're getting themselves into. So homosexuals account for 33% of pedophile rapists. 23% of children with lesbian parents have been sexually abused. Homosexuals account for 67% of AIDS patients. 78% of homosexuals have STDs. 33% of homosexual adults admit to having sex with minors. 47% of LGBT people have been raped by an adult man during their childhood. 58% of homosexuals have problems with intestinal worms. One in 15 homosexuals is a pedophile. 33% of homosexuals have problems with alcoholism. Homosexuals represent 2% to 3% of the world population, but they represent 33% of pedophile rapists. 78% of homosexuals have STDs. Homosexuals are 51% of cases of domestic violence. So again, I think it's great that we're displaying the butt sex flag, and everyone who comes to our town needs to just be thinking about butt sex. And, you know, AIDS, basically. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, our next speaker is Danica Cornejo. Danica, you're able to speak.
Thank you very much. I'll spare you my backstory and weird statistics and just get straight to the point. I am in full support of flying the pride flag as well as the Juneteenth flag on city grounds. It troubles me as a lifelong resident of Arroyo Grande that a variety of sentiments exist in our community intended to intimidate or defame both the, both the city council and city residents, particularly those belonging to the relevant minority groups, out of embracing this basic form of acceptance and representation within the bounds of the city. While there seems to be an outpour of support here when a person hears things like, "They make up so few of us, so who cares?" Their existence contradicts my religious beliefs, or anything along the lines of equating acknowledgement of a minority community through a flag as anti-unity or anti-American. It only enforces the importance of having regular visual signifiers that all are safe, all are safe and welcomed here in Arroyo Grande, to not make people feel like they should link, they should only linger on the edges of society due to their identity unrecognized on an official level. This item stands out to me particularly in the context that a federal government spending package was recently signed, banning LGBTQ plus pride flags from being flown over US embassies. In addition to the other examples brought up, I can understand why for some, the American flag alone may not symbolize the idealized unity some speakers have stressed it represents tonight. A visibility issue is certainly relevant at various government levels and hopefully not closing in on citizens of our city. This leads me to thank you, council, for taking up this ordinance. The way you've handled this meeting has encouraged me to attend future city council meetings in person, knowing how you've handled items of this caliber with grace. I'm sure you will continue to uphold such an integral space for community contributions from and for everyone. Having both of these flags flying during their respective months may encourage more community members to feel more welcomed in their community, as well as making them more able to share their voices on issues beyond this one. As long as even one person in the Arroyo Grande community is queer and/or black, I say these flags will bring a greater sense of belonging to a citizen in our city, just as all should feel. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Sadie. And Sadie, you are allowed to speak now.
Hi there. My name is Sadie Enverd. First off, I would like to just make a small comment on the last speaker. Why does race have to come into anything? It doesn't matter whether you're white, red, yellow, black, or blue. It doesn't matter whether you're a person of color or a person of race, a minority. That has nothing to do with it. I fully support the LGBTQ flags being flown across the embassies that we can, but I, I do have a small issue with the plus aspect because I do not wish the MAP aspect associated with the LGBTQ movement to be associated with that. Because even though I myself am a trans woman, and I have relations with men and women, I do not want that associated with sexual relations with minors or with children. And these MAPs, these minor attracted persons, it's a euphemism for pedophiles. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm part of a marginalized community, and the last thing I need, there's so much hate towards my people and the people who live the lifestyle that I live. The last thing we need is ourselves associated with these pedophile Jewish people who are raping children inside and outside the synagogues. We do not need this aspect associated with the LGBTQ movement. I think it is a net negative. Calm down. I have a whole spiel. And I believe under USSC Section 15 for the United States Supreme Court Code, we are allowed in city council to go ahead and criticize council members, public members, anyone else, because there's no such thing as hate speech in the United States. And I would just like to say that pedophiles deserve the rope. We should not tolerate pedophiles in any way, shape, or form. Every single one of them should be removed permanently and physically from our nation. And we can deal with the minorities afterwards, but we need to get rid of these Jews and these pedophiles.
Commenter, I'm going to stop you right there. This is a warning to all our public speakers. Hateful speech that incites violence against a group of people or purely personal comments not having to do with the item under the consideration will not be considered as part of this public hearing. And so this is a warning regarding the continuation of that speech. If it continues, we will mute you on the Zoom platform.
Sadie, you are able to continue your comment.
Yes, no, I just think it's a fair statement that nobody should be able to rape children, whether they're Jewish or not, but it's mostly been by Jews, so.
Okay, we will stop the comment, please.
Jews rape.
Okay, our next speaker is Roman Chadwell. Roman, you're able to speak.
So Roman Chadwell here. Yeah, I don't know why this mayor thinks it's acceptable to discriminate against remote participants in this meeting. You know, it's a violation of the Brown Act. You know, you've allowed the IRL participants to speak twice or three times before allowing us to speak. Therefore, I think it's, I think it's appropriate that you allow us to speak for six minutes or more. Otherwise, claims against your bonds would be appropriate. So I've listened to all of the speakers this evening, and it's clear that this, this, this city is, has, has a mental illness problem. It's a plague. It should be clear to everyone in the city that it's, that our society is collapsing. It's in a slow motion train wreck implemented by a small group of people who have seized all levers of power in our society. They control all of our media, education, health, legal, political, and entertainment industries. They have implemented trauma-based mind control on all of us. They have seized control of our children, dazzling them with rainbow colored poison, convincing them to chop off their genitals, calling it gender-affirming care, and addicting them to expensive Talmudic pharmaceuticals for the rest of their Frankenstein lives. You people ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Every single aspect of this movement, LGBTQ plus whatever you want to call it, is Jewish. Magnus Hirschfeld, Edith Windsor, Jazz Jennings, Abby Stein, Frank Camoney, Larry Brinkin, Leslie Feinberg, Brenda Howard, Jennifer Pritzker, Eli Ehrlich, George Weinberg, Harvey Milk, Kurt Freund, Betty Burson, Fritz Klein, Barney Frank, Claude Cahoon, Dean Spade. All of these people have mind-fucked everyone in this room. In the Bible, Matthew 18:6, it says, "But who so shall offend one of these little ones which believe in me? It were better for him that a millstone were hanged about his neck, and that he were drowned in the depths of the sea." Now, the municipal attorney might say that's inciting the violence, but that's a direct quote from the Bible, which basically says that you mentally ill people who are preying on children don't deserve to live. That's what the Bible says. So you might want to think about that. Have a good evening.
Okay, our next speaker is Judy Stryer. Judy, you're allowed to speak.
Yes, hello there. My issue is with the diversity, inclusion, and equity programs that your governing bodies continue to use as racist programs against whites.
Commenter, the public hearing, the public comment at this time is just strictly related to the item 9D regarding flying the commemorative flag. So your comments need to be restricted to that item at this time.
Okay, so the background of flying a commemorative flag, does that have anything to do with the background of historical anti-white racism that has been allowed to fester in our country for 40 years? Is there a time for reparations for whites for dealing with racism, systematic racism holding us back for the last 40 years? Now that the Supreme Court has ended affirmative action, will there be some sort of reparations for the whites who were held back for everyone else to go ahead of us now that we know that that was wrong 40 years later? Are we going to allow diversity, inclusion, and equity to go forward to continue that same process against whites? Is that racist to ask that question? Are you boomers in the crowd getting bent out of shape because somebody dares stand up for white rights? How much time do we have here? I would like you to know that there are a group of anti-Jewish white people in this country that are finding out that we're being run by 2% minority with overwhelming misrepresentation. It's an over-representation. They're, they run our banks and our media, and they tell us that we're wrong to not want these deviant lifestyles to be so pervasive in our culture. It's wrong to not let our white homelands be overtaken by migrant groups from the worst parts of the world who hate us. They think it's wrong for the white race to go extinct. For you guys to work for so hard for everybody else and forget about your white citizens who have been systematically held back, and it is time for you to give reparations to whites, not homosexuals and BIPOC and everybody else who wants to rape this system, but how about the people who built the system and fought for our country? Does that matter? Are the, are the men who fought themselves in their own genetic bloodlines to save the rotten Jews who fled Europe after they started the war? Do we get to listen to these narcissistic baby boomers tell us how to run the world into the ground in one generation to take the most powerful country and flush it down the toilet? At what point do we get rid of the baby boomers and the Zionists and all the pro-Jewish people?
Commenter, I'm giving you a warning that the speech has to be related to the item under consideration, which is the flying of the commemorative flags.
Speaker, you can continue.
All right, Jessica, I'm going to step in here.
Yep.
So y'all know free speech is free speech, right? And, and that's a thing. Since this type of kind of Zoom bombing thing, these people don't dare come in person, has been showing up in our county, I've had this statement prepared probably for a good six months. And I'm sorry that I'm going to go ahead and have to read it now. And so bear with me. I want to inform the community that there has been an increase in these types of attacks, don't know if you noticed, at many cities around the state where individuals have been calling into public comment lines and forcing communities to hear vile racist and anti-Semitic public comment. I want to tell the public and staff that while we may sometimes seem divided on certain issues, the city is united against hate. If you hear a comment that is hateful, you may leave the room or turn down your volume at home. You are not required to endure speech that offends decency or your core values, even when that speech is permissible under the First Amendment. that speech is permissible under the First Amendment. While any disruptors may be taking advantage of the opportunity to speak to our community because we provide individuals the opportunity to make public comment remotely, I know that we are an organization that is united against hate." I will also add to that, that at that time, we don't have to provide remote access. And I was asked, "Do we want to provide remote access?" And my response was, "This is why we can't have nice things!" Of course, I want to allow people to call in from their homes and I want public access and I want all of you to have that privilege when you have things that, that get in the way of you coming down here and speaking to us, but this is the trade-off. So, please continue, City Clerk.
Okay, our next speaker will be Levi. Levi, you're able to speak.
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I find it ridiculous that the city's wasting hours of time debating about a flag. Is the homeless crisis over? Are drug overdoses not a concern anymore? Has crime gone extinct? If not-
Levi, if you would, please keep it to the commemorative flag. It's getting late and we got work to do.
I'm trying to get to that, I'm talking about-
Get to it, please.
Should the city keep wasting time on these, on these stupid social grand, social justice grandstands? I also want to say the Brown Act protects speech that you may have found offensive. Los Angeles, a man won $200,000 for being cut off while trying to speak. I noticed that many of the people who have spoke previously on the side of flying the pride flag, that they all use different words like LGBTQ, LGBTQ plus plus, pride flag. I liked what a previous speaker said, that no one can say exactly what the pride flag means to them. No one mentioned it, but LGBTQ plus community includes those that are sexually attracted to children. Why should the city put up a flag that promotes an illegal and disgusting practice called pedophilia? I don't care that the meeting is full of degenerates coming up to speak. There are a sick bunch of people that if we're around fifty years ago would have been locked up in an institution. If someone wants to fly a swastika flag, are you gonna do that? How about an ISIS flag? I'm sure you wouldn't be so open to being inclusive to those ideas, would you? To me, a pride flag reminds me of some of these other shocking facts, like the previous speaker said, where, you know, many, many on the, the LGBT movement is just, it's full of degeneracy. Twenty eight, twenty-three percent of children with lesbian parents have been sexually abused. Homosexuality represents two percent of the world's population, but they represent eighty-seven percent of the AIDS cases. Fifty-one percent, fifty-one percent of cases of domestic violence occur in same-sex couples. These people are a bunch of loser faggots. Go fuck yourself. White fucking power. Bunch of-
Okay, all right, we can mute commenters that are using profanity or aren't ruling with the city's decorum or regarding the item at issue.
But I can't have my time because you gotta let the faggots have their time, but I can't have anything? I can't- You got a bunch of loser-
They can unmute. Okay, our next speaker is Fred. Fred, you're able to speak.
Hey, good evening, um, this is Fred Leichter here. Oh, I was born in, uh, Slow, the city. I've lived in the county here for my entire life, uh, and most recently here in AG for fourteen years. Um, I actually support my flag being, um, flown as a member of the community. I think it's very important to call attention to, uh, what we've gone through. Uh, and at the same time, I would ask that as part of the resolution, we include the NSDAP flag or something similar in a flag that can be flown, uh, commemor- commemoratively. Could fly that flag, we could fly, um, lots of others, but most importantly, uh, my favorite, like I said, uh, the NSDAP flag, because that is near and dear to my heart, um, as a flag that needs to be commemorated. And I, I, in my opinion, we could do it in April. Uh, just the other day, we had four twenty and that would be a good month, week, or however it's, uh, split, uh, into dates to fly that flag because, uh, four twenty, not only was it, uh, the day of legal, uh, you know, of, um, recreational use of marijuana, it's also the date to, uh, celebrate, uh, my Fuhrer Adolf Hitler, who did nothing wrong. The Holocaust never happened, but it really fucking should have. Gas all kikes. Fuck the Jews.
All right, uh, speakers, this is just a reminder for all on the Zoom platform. The speech has to be related to the commemorative flag, sets the item under consideration tonight. If it's not, we'll mute you and if it continues, we will remove you from the meeting.
Our next speaker is Lisa. Lisa, you're allowed to speak.
Hello, thank you for opening up, uh, this meeting. I fully support the pride flag flying everywhere. I believe in love, human rights, and compassion. And I'm really sad to hear the hate being amplified tonight. I really do wish for those people to try to figure out a way to open up, to crack open their hearts so that they do not exude hate for others and, yeah, thank you. That's all.
Okay, our next speaker is Liz Worthing. Liz, you're able to speak.
Hi, um, my name is Liz Worthing, I'm an AG resident. I was not planning on calling in during this meeting, but I just wanted to make a statement that I think this meeting shows exactly why we need to fly the pride flag. Um, I'm coming at this as a perspective as a mom and as a high school teacher and I really want our kids to feel accepted for whoever they are and to make sure our community is a place that focuses on that inclusivity. Um, and I think flying the flag is one tangible way to promote that inclusivity. And I think it's a small action, but I think it's absolutely worthwhile. We may have come a long way in inclusivity, but clearly, we have a lot further to go. And I just wanted to make a note for anyone listening, um, I imagine many people calling in are not local and I don't think we should think they represent the local opinion, but my heart went out to especially the youth who spoke tonight, having to sit through and listen to some of those comments. Um, I have no doubt the decision tonight, um, you will make the right one as a council and I believe we need to make sure tonight's decision reflects that we are an inclusive community, um, and I thank you so much for giving me, um, this time.
Okay, our next speaker is Rudy Hess. Rudy, you're allowed to speak.
Yes, good evening, City Council. We're on the, uh, flag ordinance, right? We're not in the open public, we're talking about the flag, just so I can get a correction, so I'm speaking on the correct ordinance?
Yes, this is item nine D about the flag.
Okay, perfect, we're on nine D, we're on nine D, fantastic. I just want to say that all pedophiles get the rope, trannies get the rope-
Okay, uh, commenter, uh, it needs to be regarding the commemorative flags. Yep.
Okay, our last speaker will be Mike. I, I can't say the last, I'm sorry, Mike. You are allowed to speak now.
Yes, that's, uh, Mike Kikevin.
Yep, yep.
Okay, um, goingtv.com.
Uh, public commenter, we, uh, these comments are limited just to about the commemorative flag, so you're being warned that, uh, you can speak only about the commemorative flags and the city will have to mute you for consideration from this item if it's not regarding that.
Please remember white rights matter. White rights matter. Remember on your flag that not just every other protected group-
You're being removed. That is all of public comment.
That's it?
I apologize, there is one. We'll see where that goes. Okay. All right, uh, Brenton, you're allowed to talk.
Hello, City Council, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, I, I just wanted to say in, in regards to this flag re- resolution, I would just like to bring up some statistics that I think are very important. In two thousand and seventeen, adult and adolescent gay and bisexual men made up seventy percent of the thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine new HIV diagnoses. Now, I'm bringing these statistics up as a reason to oppose the pride flag, so I still believe that this is relevant. Um, I don't, I mean, HIV is awful, obviously, many people die from it every year and I just don't believe that we should be supporting that. Um, studies have shown that when compared with the general population, gay and bisexual men, lesbian and transgender individuals are more likely to use alcohol and drugs, have higher rates of substance abuse, not withhold from alcohol and drug use and continue heavy drinking in the later life. Like, I, I, I just don't think that we can support that. Uh, it's, they find a positive association between childhood malt, malt, maltreatment and same-sex sexuality and adulthood with lesbians and gay men reporting one point six to four times greater prevalence of sexual and physical abuse than heterosexuals. While the ratio of genophiles to androphiles among the general population is approximately twenty to one, the ratio of heterosexual to homosexual pedophiles was calculated to be approximately eleven to one. That means that pedophiles are eleven times more, are more likely to be gay. This sug- this suggests that the resulting proportion of true pedophiles among persons with a homosexual erotic development is greater than that in persons who develop hetero- heterosexual or heterosexuality. A US government study found that LGBT youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than other young people. The man who invented the term gender identity, gender role, and sexual orientation and whose research formed the basis of modern gender theory was also a child pornographer and child abuser, contributing to the socia- to the suicide of one man, as well as the schizophrenia and eventual drug overdose of another. You can Google him, his name is John Money. The reason I am bringing this up is that I don't, I, when you are going to fly a flag, it shows that you are in support of this ideology and what it is doing is harming our youth while we are preaching openness and acceptance. Everyone loves it, but at the end of the day, we need to look at the actual repercussions for promoting this type of ideology. I can't support children un-aliving themselves, I can't support that, I can't support pedophilia. That is why I am opposing us flying this flag. We have forty-one percent of transgender individuals who attempt suicide in their life and promoting it isn't going to help. People that are young are about twenty percent likely to be, like, but twenty percent of the youth population is about gay. They're, they're twenty percent of the population's gay. That is unlike any other group ever. The more that we promote it and accept it, the more that we are allowing this. And when children are dying, the blood is on your hands for allowing this and for-
That's three minutes.
It is your fault and I hope-
Okay, no one else has entered into the public comment.
Thank you. So, remember that I did say that if you had not had the chance to speak prior to going to online public comment and you wish to speak now and you're here in chambers, please feel free to do so. All right, seeing no one, we will close public comment. Well, that was something, wasn't it? Um, thank you all for your patience and for your decorum, no matter which side you're on, I very much appreciate it because that is the values here in Arroy Grande even when we disagree. Um, we went straight to public comment because that was what I deemed was necessary, but we skipped right over the part where the council actually gets to ask questions. So, there's a little procedure that we're going to do here first and make sure that those can, those questions get answered, then the council will go straight to deliberations, okay? So, Mayor Protam, you indicated that you had questions?
Yeah, just a fairly specific one, we didn't have a, 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 a presentation on this either, but I, I did want, want to ask about, because this is an evergreen, uh, proposal, yeah. Uh, I, I, my question is, how in the future, if, if some future council did it, wanted to not fly these flags anymore, what would that, what, what would that procedure look like for them?
Well, thank you, uh, Mayor Protam, that's a good question, we've talked about that internally. So, the, uh, request to add a commemorative flag and flag, commemorative flag does fall under your flag policy. So, that requires one council member to make that request and a second council member to, uh, second that request and it comes back, uh, to the full council for a four-fifths supermajority vote. Uh, in the future, should a future council decide to not fly a flag any longer, they would have to make the request to staff to add that item to an agenda and it would take a simple majority to remove that, uh, from the evergreen provision.
So, so, so it would take four council members to put one up, but it would only take three to take one down?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's actually my only question.
Any other questions of staff? And forgive me, I skipped right over staff. You, you got anything you want to add, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, not, not at this time, Mayor, I think we've, I think it sounds like most people have read the agenda item tonight.
Okay. Um, so, let us bring it back to the council. Um, and, uh, Councilmember Barnage, since this was your item that you brought forward, would you like to go first?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, first of all, uh, I am, um, happy to move forward with staff's recommendation. Um, I don't have many comments, um, I don't have anything prepared, um, but I just do have some notes in front of me that aren't pretty, uh, but let's see if I can make sense of them. So, I firmly believe that flying the pride flag is suicide prevention, absolutely, absolutely, without a doubt. I know people, I know young adults who have taken their lives that have lived in Arroy Grande because they were afraid they wouldn't be accepted. And we heard from a young man, um, last year who spoke bravely before the city council. Um, and he said it, quote, "means much more, um, than, than people understand." And I think that if you're a straight heterosexual, um, I, I think there are a lot of people that do understand that's in that group, but I also think if you are not the minority and you are the majority in your sexual orientation, you can't understand what this flag means. Um, you drive by it and you say, "Oh yeah, it's the pride flag." But to someone who is questioning if they should come out, when they should come out, if they will be accepted, to see the leaders of their community put a flag up that represents them, um, that, that could literally prevent a suicide. It, it really could and we can't really, um, we can't trivialize that at all. So, to me, it's, it's very important. Um, some, one speaker said it represents a lifestyle. No, it doesn't rep- represent a lifestyle, it represents people that are just different than other people, but not less than the person who spoke. One person spoke and said that it's rough out there, four members of the LGBTQ community, and I will concur wholeheartedly with that speaker. The, Arroy Grande is a great place to live, but it's definitely, um, a community that's not quite there yet with being as accepting as I would like it to be. And I think the reason we put the, uh, we put the flag on the agenda four years ago is because we were hearing about discrimination and we had it, had to lead by example and, and put this out there so that, um, these people would know that hate will not be tolerated in our city. Uh, another speaker said, "Does this represent our community?" Because it doesn't represent perhaps their sexual orientation. And I would say, yes, absolutely, it represents our community because it represents that we love and accept no matter who you love and who you identify as. So, I will be voting for this this evening and, uh, I appreciate all the public speakers that came out and, um, gave us, uh, their two cents. Thank you.
Councilmember George?
My eyes are glassing over just a little bit, it's almost nine o'clock and we're still on consent agenda, so that's super fun. Um, first of all, I want to thank the youth for coming forward. They're very brave. Um, what makes me sad- What makes me sad, and the reason why I will be supporting tonight's staff recommendation to fly all three flags, but most importantly, the progressive flag, which we've been discussing a lot tonight, is I feel afraid. That's what someone said tonight. And we'll continue to fly this flag until our repres, our, our residents, sorry, our residents don't have to say that anymore. And if that's not enough of a reason, then I don't know what is. I work really hard with our youth to support a safe space for them because there is a lot of mental health issues with our youth right now. I want to also create that safe space here in the city of Arroy Grande. So we are more than a city. We are a community. And while this flag may not represent every single member of our society, every single member of our society should be an ally and should support. And that is why I am supporting the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Thank you. So I'm supporting the ordinance as well. And it was very moving. Last year, we heard from one or two students, which I thought was extremely brave. And so there's not much I can say. You all are, you know, everyone already heard the best speakers. It's, I get a little frustrated hearing people say that the American flag represents everyone, and that should be fine. And if there's a problem, they can go to the police. That's not true. That is not true. If, if, of course, if you're assaulted and it's a serious crime or something, of course, go to the police. But I'm saying that it's not acknowledging what this population puts up with every day in all sorts of aggressions and inappropriate inhumane treatment. And it's, it's just not, it's just not accepting the reality of what, what this population goes through. So I support it very much. And just as a little side note, nobody's really talked about it much, but I was the one that asked to put the National Military Appreciation Flag on the, on the agenda or talk about it. And just want to tell you really quickly why that was. I was contacted by a constituent that felt strongly about it. And it's not, it's not that you just get to call in and we, we put whatever you want on. But I researched it, and it, it made sense to me. It was started by Senator John McCain in 1999. And it's a little bit different. It's not Veterans Day for those that have served. And it's not Memorial Day to commemorate those that have died serving. But it's to just acknowledge all the many, many, many people that actually work in all different forms for the military. It doesn't mean they're going to war or anything like that. But I, my perception is there's an awful lot of folks out there that do have this job and in this community. I just wanted to support them. So I'm in favor of the, all three flags. Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Well, I'll lead with that, that I, I am also going to support this tonight. But I do have a somewhat different perspective than I, I think the rest of the council has here. I, I see taking this step to put up a flag is not, it's not like a policy statement. It is an exceptional, it's an exceptional thing that says, we have a problem that we need to solve. And four years ago, I think that was clear. Someday, it's not going to be clear. My, my, to, to me, we need to have a, a current and compelling reason. And I, I voted for this last year. I actually came in prepared not to vote for it. But there was, there was a compelling argument made that this is, that we're not there yet. I feel the same way tonight. But I am concerned about us sort of tying the hands of a future council that is going to, going to maybe want not to have one of these, to, to, to feel that we are there and it's time to do this. We had the comment tonight that to vote against this is to vote with the people we heard, that we heard in public comment on the, on, on, on the Zoom. And I, I, I want you to put yourself in the position of some future council that maybe has to take that action, that they have to say, no, we're not, we're not doing this one anymore, or we're not doing any of them anymore. So clearly, to, tonight, we saw, you know, that, that, that members of the LGBTQ community do not feel safe. The fact that this many people show up, frankly, I think this is a bigger statement about that they, about their safety than any flag is. Most people will not even see that flag. I, I, I have to admit, I, I don't remember seeing it. I probably wasn't, wasn't over in Heritage Park when it was up or whenever it was there. So, so I, I'm, I'm concerned about the, the evergreen aspect here. I'll, I, I'm not going to vote against it over that, but I do think that it, we, we need to keep that in mind. This isn't, like I say, this is not a policy. This is, this is, we, we made it. For some of you who were around in the early 2000s, we had cross burning. I don't remember how many of you remember that? That was a time that required a very specific, and the outcome of that was, in fact, the Diversity Committee. And four years ago, we had some very specific stuff. Even two years ago, during the last election, we, we had some very specific stuff and, but this community really stood up and voted against that. And so I, my, my feeling is maybe we're closer, I think we're closer than you guys do, to, to being there on this issue. That's not that I in any way support the, the kinds of comments. I don't, I don't think the LGBTQ flag is a threat to the American flag. It is a, it is a statement that, at this point, this, this particular part of our community needs support. If tomorrow there was another cross burning, we would, we would have a different response. If there was a hate crime against a Latino, we would have a different response. So. So like I say, I'm, I'm prepared to support it tonight. I would, I would like to see the evergreen part. I get it. I wouldn't look forward to doing this again next year. But I, I, I do think we, maybe we do have to always do it because we always, we always have to, have to make that statement, not just put up a flag and, okay, we're done, you know? And now, if, we, we, I, I, I think, I, I, I think that because it has, to me, has a very specific purpose, that we need to review that purpose every time. Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, I generally prepare something ahead of time, and I was really thinking about what I wanted to say this year. But I want to begin with just, I mean, I, I teach history, right? This is the world I live in, and I teach youth, high school youth. So this is the world I live in. And while I don't personally know the pain, I witness the pain. And I also struggle with the evergreen part. At first, I thought it was a great idea because then we don't have to put staff through this. And those of you who are in this room watched our staff have to deal with the, with what we got online. And the people at home weren't seeing that. And so I, I'm, I'm conflicted about the evergreen part because I am absolutely unafraid of those comments. But I'm a pro. I've been sitting here for a while. And that is so painful for our staff to hear. It is so painful for our community here. But at the same time, I say it's proof of, this is really real. This is a problem. This is truth. We can't just wax poetic and point at the American flag and say, yeah, we finished 250 years ago. We didn't. We're not done. And no true American would say that America is ever done. It's not done. So I'm sorry to begin my comments with saying, I'm sorry you all had to hear those things, and those of you at home had to hear those things. But it's hard to be an American, and it's hard to be in a democracy, and it's hard to recognize that people get to do those things as hateful as they are. And we did have to push right to the line of where that legal limit is in order to protect the city. And to our city attorney, I'm sorry you had to experience and, and deal with that. He's usually so quiet. He just sits over there and doesn't say anything till we ask him. So I'm sorry for that. The American flag is the ideal. It does represent unity. It represents what America stands for. But the pride flag flying, not above it, but below it, reminds us that there's still work to be done. We're not finished, and we never will be. And I think that's kind of the same sentiment that Mayor Protam was saying, but I'm twisting that around a little bit. I also want to be really clear about my intent. A speaker came up and said what my intent was. And I want to make crystal clear what my intent is and what my intent isn't. My intent is not indoctrination. My intent is not any of the hateful things that were said in the name of this city council. This is an act of love. It is not an act of division. It's an act of support. It is not an act of favoritism. And now I'm going to kind of go to some of what I wrote. I'm going to try and paraphrase because I know it's late and we got work to do. You heard people come to the dais and talk about coming out, and those are the words that are still used. Coming out. And what coming out means is coming out from the shadows, coming out from being unseen to being seen. And the people who are, I, I, I understand that there are people who say, two flags only, that's it. I, I get that. There, there is an argument to be made there. But the people who see that flag as offensive don't understand what it means to live in the shadows. And I personally don't either. But I know that just the way we label what that looks like, coming out. When I put that flag there, and I, I, I visibly put it there, and I say, I see you. That is an act of love. That is an act of support. That is an act of saying, you don't have to live in secret. You can stand next to me, and I will, I love your Free Mom Hugs shirt. Well, I might have to find out where you got one of those. But the fact that you, that, that the LGBTQ plus community has to decide when to reveal themselves speaks to the safety aspect of, of needing to know that walking down the street, you're going to be safe. And I was, my heart broke, and I don't know if any of you heard it. You heard it, but I don't know if you heard it like I did. When the trans lady came and said she had considered, she had considered her own public death and said, "That flag will tell me it wasn't for nothing." That is horrifying to me that someone has literally not just contemplated death, that's what it means to be a conscious human, but that they had contemplated their own public death in our city and was okay with it. They had come to terms with it. And for that reason, I fly this flag. I see you. I said this last year. I say it every year. I see you. I hear you. I feel you. I welcome you. It matters that the council takes this action because somebody asked about polling. We got polled. It's called an election. And I don't mean to fly in the face of those people who didn't vote for us. I understand. Not everybody loves Karen Rae Russel. I get it. Believe me. But when we say this takes an act of the supermajority of the council, it's not just four fifths is more. What that means is four fifths represents not one election, but two elections. And so I don't want that to be lost on the public, that that requires two elections worth of people. It's not a trend. It's who we are. And for that reason, I am in support. I am open to having the conversation about the evergreen clause because I get, I'm okay with having this conversation every year. I hate it. It's not fun. But I also understand that my ability to tolerate that and my understanding of what it means to be American as a, as a teacher of what it means to be, I teach American government, that may not be as comforting to our staff. So council, floor is open. How you want, it, it's clear. We all agree on the commemorative flags. But in terms of the evergreen process, please, please feel free.
So I would just offer an idea that maybe a compromise is that, or it's not a compromise because we do it already, but we do have the Pride Month proclamation. And so if this were evergreen, if the flags in general, speaking specifically about the, the progress, the pride flag, were on, were evergreen, we would still have a proclamation, and we would still have a chance to have public speakers come during that time. We would still have a chance to provide, provide comments. Certainly, all of the other interesting folks that called in would also have the chance. So I feel like that's still a time when we could highlight what we believe in and why we do what we do. Just as a, if, maybe that helps Protam, Mayor Protam Guthrie come along, come along. I mean, I think you're coming along anyway, but maybe come along more happily, easily or something.
Go ahead, just jump in.
Okay, so I think that makes sense, and I understand the mayor's concern about the staff, and I share that concern. But I also have concern about young, young people that come here and stand up in front of everyone and talk about being scared and, and not feeling comfortable in Arroy Grande. Like, and then having to hear hateful comments and unsupportive comments. I guess I'm just wondering how that affects them every year. And I, that was something I was kind of looking forward to avoiding. But I can sit here all day if you, if people want to insult us. That, I mean, me, that's not the problem, but yeah.
I don't think we should be under any illusions that this is the only day of the year they hear that. Mayor, uh, excuse me, Councilmember George?
I support the evergreen. I, I don't feel that we need to always have this, and I'm going to call it an argument, because until our society can get there, it's going to be an argument. I don't feel like we need to have it every year, and I'm perfectly okay with keeping it evergreen.
I can feel a motion coming. Her glasses went on.
Sorry, we're still way back here. Hang on. I got to go back. I don't have the resolution in front of me. Well, but let's see. I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city to display the commemorative flag specified therein on a recurring annual basis in accordance with all policies and procedures established in the city's adopted policy. That includes, do you want me to list them?
Councilmember Barnage, I think it's sufficient since they're included within the item.
Okay, thank you. That, my motion stands.
Second? All right, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Barnage?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Rae Russel? Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone, for showing the values of Arroy Grande and allowing people to speak and speak unimpeded. I really appreciate that. The decorum is something that we ask for. That's not everywhere, but that's here. So thank you. We'll give you just a minute to clear the room if you choose. We do have plenty of other business to do. So we'll take a very, just, I'm not even going to turn off the cameras, but just a two-second break. Bye, John. Thanks for sticking with us, Alexandra. And one other. All right. Let us resume our meeting. So as a reminder, we remove, we moved item 10A to the end due to a couple of recusals that will be happening. So we will be starting with item 10B at this time. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution of necessity for acquisition by eminent domain of temporary construction easements interests in certain real property for the trafficway bridge replacement project. Mr. Robison and, well, and company?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Shannon Sweeney, city engineer. I'm here to share some information regarding the trafficway bridge replacement project. This is a hearing of necessity, and I'm going to start by giving some information about the order of operations for this hearing. This is, I know it sounds scary, but it's the first step to securing temporary construction easements. That's basically borrowing land for the trafficway bridge replacement project. If the city is unable to negotiate mutual agreements with five If the city is unable to negotiate mutual agreements with five property owners. I have good news. It's no longer five. It's now three. Um, in between the time that the resolution was written and today, two additional ones have been um, secured. Uh, but we haven't changed it. It still has the five. Uh, but there are specific steps needed for a necessity hearing. Uh, the first is this staff presentation. Uh, next, the city clerk will note any written objections, protests, or requests to be heard. We'll do that at the end of this uh, presentation. Then there'll be a public hearing for property owners to testify before council. Uh, then open regular Brown Act public comment and then close the hearing and then consider adoption of the resolution necessity by a four fifths vote. First, I'll share some background about trafficway bridge. It was originally built in nineteen thirty-two. The picture on the left is if you crawled underneath trafficway bridge today. What you see are piers. When this bridge was built, those piers were embedded twenty-three feet into the ground. Uh, this creek scours the dirt away. And so now uh, some of those have lost over nine feet of dirt embedment. So uh, we inspect this bridge on a regular basis. It has a load limit now. And the fear is that if we don't get this bridge replaced in a timely manner, that it will be closed prematurely because it will uh, fail to be able to carry uh, the load that it needs to carry. The picture on the right is a rendering of what this bridge will look like when it is done. The beautiful thing about this bridge is that there are no piers in the creek itself. And therefore the scour potential goes away because there are no longer piers in the ground. Uh, that will have this problem in the future. In order to be able to um, access the bridge and to store and use equipment for the replacement of the bridge, we need to secure some temporary construction easements. The picture on the right uh, accesses a farm road off of Fair Oaks Avenue. I drive up that it, the reason why it follows the shape it does is because those are farm roads. And then it comes up across adjacent to the creek. And then if you move over to the picture on the left, you can see the other properties. There are nine in total that uh, we need temporary construction easements for. Yeah, we had four, five, six. So we have six of those temporary construction easements already secured and we just have three of these properties left. So the temporary construction easements is for access and staging two for only thirty-six months, starting August first of twenty twenty-four. Uh, so the city hired Hamner Jewel and Associates. Lillian from that company is here today uh, for right-of-way acquisition. Uh, her team has procured preliminary title reports, obtained third-party appraisals for those larger easements. Agreement offers were made to all nine properties back in March. This slide says four have already signed. Happy to say it's now six. And negotiations do continue with remaining properties even as we take uh, this first step. It is important that we get certification of these uh, temporary construction easements by the end of August. Reason being is if Caltrans doesn't certify them by that date, they'll deem our project not ready to continue and we will lose a year. Uh, so they'll say, well, you're not ready, so we'll pull the funding for this year and we'll move it to the next year. And that's problematic for a couple of reasons. The first one is I don't really want to go through another rainy season that I don't have to with the scour potential on those piers. The second is there are other projects in the pipeline that if we slide the schedule on this one, then we will miss uh, the schedule for housing on complete streets, which is currently slated for the following year. We've already tried to do, you know, tried to figure out if we can do both projects at once. And the answer is no, we can't. So there, there's a, a bit at stake if we miss that deadline. Starting uh, the necessity hearing today gives us enough time. If we don't succeed in getting those negotiations by August, gives us enough time to do all the legal paperwork necessary in order to secure them through legal routes. So there are four findings that need to be made uh, during this necessity hearing. Those four findings are listed here. I'm going to read them uh, one by one and share how we meet those findings. The first one is the public interest in necessity require the proposed project. Trafficway Bridge is important for traffic circulation. Imagine it gone. Well, you won't have to next year because it will be and traffic is going to be quite disrupted. Uh, there will be two temporary light signals where there aren't right now. Bridge Street will be converted to one way. I- it's going to be disruptive as it is. If we had to close it prematurely, that means we have to endure that for even longer. Uh, the new bridge, as you saw, the design of it will reduce the future for scour potential. And uh, the new bridge will improve public safety. And as I said, the failure to secure those easements by August of twenty-four really does jeopardize the schedule for both this project and future large construction projects in the future. I jumped ahead. Uh, the project is planned or located in a manner that would be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. This project is on the verge of being ninety percent designed complete. Uh, the access two and the staging four were all considered in the design. And we considered very carefully where these uh, TCEs would exist. And uh, this is the least injurious in terms of the property that needs to be secured. Uh, constructing the bridge elsewhere would require that we acquire not temporary easements, but permanent easements, which would be far more injurious to the uh, property owners there. We only need temporary easements for this, which is quite nice. Uh, so we don't have to secure um, permanent easements. And a planned replacement project prior to bridge failure is preferable to an emergency. You know, it'd be horrible if this bridge failed or premature bridge closure as a result of an inspection determining that it is no longer safe to use. Uh, the real property to be acquired is necessary for the project. A contractor needs to be able to get to the construction site and that's what that access is for. Heavy equipment and materials need to be stored and staged to facilitate efficient and cost-effective construction. Uh, the council earlier determined that they wanted this project to be a single year and not uh, two-year. And um, the staging and access to this bridge allow it to be as efficient as possible so we can actually get it done efficiently. And uh, same here proceeding, not proceeding with construction can lead to an emergency failure or premature bridge closure. All right. And then finding for offers. My apologies. Offers of just compensation have been made to the property owners. So the appraisals were prepared by independent state licensed third-party appraisers. Uh, we used uh, just compensation using fair market appraisals to each one of the owners of record. Uh, the easements are for thirty-six months, uh, starting August first, twenty twenty-four. And we continue to negotiate agreements with the three remaining property owners. So that won't stop even as we proceed with this process. This lists the property specific information. You'll see that Hanson is listed as signed. Theirs was signed last Friday. The one that was signed, kid you not, this afternoon was Dohe. So that one is signed as well. That leaves us with the Saratari listed first. That is the um, the path along the farm roads off of Fair Oaks. Uh, the requested easement is on farming roads and there's no impact to cultivated land anticipated. Uh, the Pacific Fuel Group, which uh, that's the property that has the gas station that fronts Branch Street. And the temporary construction easement is mostly landlocked and otherwise unusable. And then Kalusian, um, the larger property includes retail, but the TCE is in or along the bank of AG Creek. For all these properties, it's only for three years and the property is to be returned to previous condition. All right, I'm going to turn to the city clerk uh, to uh, report prior to questions.
Thank you. So all five property owners were mailed individual notices on April eighth. And we also completed an affidavit of mailing for each property owner. Um, as of the hearing right now, we have received no protests.
Thank you. I now open it to questions.
All right, any questions to my right? Questions to my left? I have only one. Um, what's the, why are the others, is there a holdout? Is there a, a conceptual issue? Or is it just we haven't completed those negotiations? I'm not asking about the e- the timing for this. I'm not asking for that.
If I may, I'd like to see if Lillian would be willing to come up and answer that question as a representative of our right-of-way consultant.
Thank you. Hey. Thanks for staying.
Um, so to answer your question, uh, two of the properties are getting their own appraisal. So you know, by law, they have a right to get their second appraisal to confirm. I think there's some trusts involved and they just want to verify the fair market values. Need a little more time. And the third one just has a little more details to work through on construction access. And so a little more negotiation.
Do you have hope on all three?
Yes.
Okay. So do you anticipate we'll actually have to exercise this issue or this uh, uh?
Well, um, the issue, as Shannon said, is timing to make sure that you protect your construction schedule and don't use, lose your um, funding. Um, and Caltrans requires us to get right-of-way certification by August, as they mentioned. So that's the key to have your backup plan and make sure your schedule doesn't slide. So, and the property owners are aware of that and we've discussed that with them.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let us open up public comment. You don't have to. You look like you were thinking about it, Alexandra.
I mean, I'm, I don't really know a lot of eminent domain.
Well, there you go. No, please come back. That might've been the most perfect timing I've seen at the podium ever.
Okay, so, so I'm not familiar with a lot about eminent domain, though I am sort of aware of what it is. A question that I have is if we're late in the process and like you're, you've already technically filed the paperwork for eminent domain and then you fi- and then you get the property that you would need in the eminent domain for, do they still have the ability to get, get that final negotiation and have that move forward rather than the eminent do- eminent domain, domain version?
Thank you. And uh, I thi- I think we can answer that as uh, this is just a backup. So we're not actually exercising this at this time. Did you want to further comment, Mr. Robeson?
Sure, there, there's still um, steps for negotiation and opportunities for that as we move through this. So um, yes, so there's more opportunity there.
Thank you. All right, let's bring it back to the council.
There, Madam Mayor, there are
Oh, there's people.
Members of the public online. I know. Okay, if any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand. Okay. All right, our first speaker is Mary. Mary, you're able to speak. Mary, you'll need to unmute yourself to speak. I will try to add, there we go. We can hear you. Mary, you're able to speak now.
Hi, uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mary. Um, wow, um, so I, I, I support it. Um, I'm a, I'm actually, I was a construction worker uh, for the longest time. And then I, I uh, was, I cut off my penis and now I'm a tranny.
All right, uh, Mary, uh, it's this just regarding the necessity of hearing and so you'll be muted. Um, so you have one more opportunity. Okay.
Juice did nine eleven. Juice did nine eleven.
Okay, please stop, yeah. Jessica, you gotta be quick on the draw, girlfriend.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if you heard me. There are no other public comments.
Thank the sweet eight and a half pound baby Jesus. All right, let's bring this back to the council. Um, do we have any commentary?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
I, I do have one comment because I do think it's important to say.
Yes, it probably is.
Uh, I can make all four findings. I hope we don't have to use it.
Yeah.
That's my comment.
Here, here. And with that, I would move forward with, hold on. Uh, let's see. I would move to approve a resolution of necessity declaring that the acquisition by eminent domain of TC interest, temporary construction easements in certain real property more particularly described as APN zero zero seven four eight two zero zero six, zero zero seven four eight one zero one one, zero zero seven four eight two zero two six, zero zero six three eleven zero five six and zero zero six three eleven zero six seven, collectively known as the property may be necessary for the project. Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnage?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Rae Russel?
Yes. Uh, does anybody need a break? Okay. All right, then we will move forward to item twelve A. This is consideration of a five-year capital improvement program budget and five-year Measure O two thousand six sales tax fund expenditure program.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Nicole Valentine, the Administrative Services Director. I will be presenting the consideration of the five-year capital improvement budget and the five-year Measure O two thousand six sales tax fund expenditure program. By reviewing a five-year program, this allows for long-term capital and financial planning and accommodates multi-year projects. We will also review the five-year Measure O two thousand six sales tax fund expenditure, expenditure program that provides for both operating and capital needs. All proposed expenditures for both programs are reviewed and prioritized, prioritize every budget cycle. A diverse team of city staff from the city manager's office, the administrative services department, engineering, community development, police, fire, and public works attended a series of collaborative workshops to discuss the requested capital improvement projects in consideration of many factors. A rating system was utilized during the workshop based on the colla- collaborative discussion to prioritize projects based on these factors listed here on the slide. This table displays the list of unfunded CIP projects. A total of thirty-two projects are not included in the proposed five-year plan. These pri- projects are not included in the, oh, excuse me. These lower priority projects are included in the unfunded project list, which will be revisited during future CIP planning and budgeting exercises. And if alternative funding and staff resources become available, some of the unfunded projects could later be included in the five-year CIP budget. Historically, the city has completed um, approximately an average of eight or nine CIP projects each year. The city should have capacity to complete approximately ten CIP projects each year. This table shows that the goal for the number of CIPs to complete per year and the number of projects included in the current five-year CIP budget. In a typical year, the city also encounters one to two unforeseen projects such as natural, nat- excuse me, natural disasters and infrastructure breakdown or damage. I will hand this over to the Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director Bill Robeson to review the projects.
Thank you, Nicole. So these are the projects that were completed this year and I won't go through them all, but uh, the highlights are uh, the Fair Oaks water line uh, replacement. Uh, that was a huge project for us to uh, upgrade some uh, water lines so that we could remain compliant with state, state law. Um, uh, lift station number three was, is also a stabilization project for a piping system that crosses the creek that has been in place for uh, about twenty-five years. And we needed to armor that so that it could remain in place and not um, uh, break open and leak into the creek. That's a sewer lift station that I'm talking about. Um, I will just jump to the next. Yes, thank you. So, these are some multi-year projects, uh, that we have been working on and they bleed over from, uh, a few years back, like the Swinging Bridge, which we are gonna, uh, like, uh, I think Shannon mentioned a few times, uh, that we're gonna be working on. And it begins, uh, in May of 2024, so we're coming up on, uh, construction start there. 2024 Street Repairs, we're in final design of that. Uh, we are, um, gonna talk about that a little bit more in a moment. And Trafficway Bridge, which, uh, our city engineer just spoke about, is in final designs. Uh, obviously, uh, we just did a right-of-way acquisition, uh, step and, uh, we're moving forward with that project. Here's a few, um, examples and I'll go through these quickly. Uh, the Parklet Program, uh, is in permanent place now and it's, um, uh, it looks great. We have a lot of positive comments, uh, from citizens and the way that they, the design looks along with, uh, just some of the landscaping that's gone into the, the planting. Um, you can see on the right that we've done an upgrade on the old tile bands, uh, throughout the village and, um, that, uh, brick pattern that you see is also in the crosswalks in the village. More projects completed this year, a large-scale pavement program. Um, that was about 3.6 miles of dig-out slash overlay and that's a two-stage, uh, process. You can see it over on the right, uh, over on Equestrian Way, which was a really, um, uh, which was a, a roadway that was in really poor condition. Uh, we did dig-outs, which are structural, which is structural work, uh, digging down to the, uh, substrate where the, um, uh, compacted dirt is and then brick, building up from there and then having a more finished, uh, overlay treatment on top of that. The photo on the left, or the map on the left, shows the amount of work that we've done and, uh, a lot of that is the slurry seal project that, uh, our city manager spoke of, uh, earlier in his updates. Uh, so, uh, we're looking at 8.3 miles of slurry seal. Um, and that's about 12 miles of, of roadwork out of, you know, about 70 miles. So, that's a good percentage, uh, of, um, uh, roadway that we're improving, so we're really proud of that. Another, um, uh, project was, that was completed this year due to the flooding, uh, and some FEMA work that we've done, um, is just removal of debris from AG Creek. Uh, you can see the massive log there. We had several logs, um, lodged themselves, uh, throughout the creek. They floated down and then they, um, go sideways. Um, the picture, the, the photo that our city engineer showed of the, uh, pilings for the Trafficway Bridge, we had two large logs that were, um, lodged i, in that, uh, in that s, structure. So, uh, being able to pull those out, uh, saved, um, the bridge itself and, uh, also allowed the volume of water to flow. So, you can see the before and after in that one, that's okay. Uh, these are some other smaller projects that had a huge impact, uh, on the flooding, um, that we had, uh, about a year ago. And, uh, the flows that we had this storm, um, were much smoother, flowed much better. Through the executive order from the state, we were able to streamline the process and get, uh, sediment, uh, out of these, um, out of these waterways and allow the, uh, flows to just be more voluminous and allow, um, and to avoid flooding in that tally ho neighborhood. I'll hand it over to, uh, Nicole.
Okay. Um, so the projects in, included in the five-year CIP budget total $46.7 million. In the fiscal year 2425 mid-cycle budget update, the projects total $18.6 million. These projects have a large reliance on grant funding, debt financing, and Measure O 2006 Sales Tax Funds. The Measure O 2006 Sales Tax Funds provides $10.7 million in funding over the five-year plan. The proposed project list continues to focus on maintaining the city's current assets and infrastructure. This table shows the five-year CIP budget by funding source and fiscal year. Um, we've highlighted the major funding sources and show the total funding that will be spent each fiscal year. This pie chart breaks down the five-year CIP budget by function. The streets and bridges section, um, is, make up 73%. Parks makes up 14%. Water makes up 5% and the remaining 8% is made up of stormwater, wastewater, and the miscellaneous projects. The Measure O 06 Sales Tax Fund proposed five-year plan includes $1.9 million for transportation projects related to Fair Oaks Orchard Road Intersection Improvements and Trafficway Bridge, $5.6 million for streets and park improvements, including $4.5 million for pavement management program, $640,000 for striping and sidewalk improvements, $450,000 for wayfinding, short street plaza, and the AG Creek stabilization, um, $814,000 for storm drain improvements, continued funding for public safety enhancements of approximately $6.8 million, including $5.3 million for services from the Five Cities Fire Authority, $1.1 million for a senior police officer position over the five-year period, $423,000 towards Police Narcotics Task Force and Animal Services Building Debt Services. Additionally, $2.4 million for projects improving city facilities. That includes $1.6 million for the Recreation Services Community Center, $310,000 for ADA bathrooms at Elm Street Park and an ADA transition plan, $158,000 for upgrades at the police station, and $150,000 for upgrades at Fire Station One. The City of Arroy Grande received $4,300,241 of ARPA funds. allocations of the ARPA funds were completed at two council meetings in 2021. As projects become completed and funding priorities have changed, the city has made five additional reallocations of city ARPA funds. The final rule regulating the use of ARPA funds went into effect in April of 2022 and included a few major changes, including the simplification of the revenue loss use, which allows for local governments to utilize a standard presumption of revenue loss to provide general services to the community. Arroy Grande has until December of 31st, 2024 to commit ARPA funds by way of contract or purchase order. And the current rule states that all funds must be spent by December 31st, 2026. With this information and approaching deadline for commitment of the funds, staff is recommending that some of the ARPA funds be relocated toward projects that would be completed or committed by the ARPA deadlines. This table highlights the proposed changes for ARPA funding allocations. The original miscellaneous infrastructure projects totaled $880,700 and the proposed, proposed projects total $676,493. And the streets infrastructure projects current was $24,958 and the proposed is 229. The ARPA allocation totals do not change, but the projects, uh, spending changes. The, the large change is due to the, uh, lower than anticipated cost for the public safety video cameras and reallocating those funds to projects that we do believe we can complete within the deadline. This table highlights the, the result of that allocation that we just discussed by, uh, shifting funds. This is the total recommendation for the full ARPA funds, the 4.3 million. I'll hand this back to you. That's what my signups say.
Okay. So, um, these are the major projects that we're looking at over the next, uh, five years. These are the CIPs. We are still continuing to work on the public safety video camera, uh, process, uh, system. Trafficway Bridge, obviously, is, um, uh, the next, uh, large project that we're doing. It's the most significant. Halcyon Complete Streets, um, PMP, the pa, uh, Pavement Management, uh, Program. Um, we have about $10 million over a five-year period and I talk about that in just a moment, just a little bit more. Uh, Sewer and Infrastructure, uh, we're getting, uh, we're gonna, well, we'll have about $4 million over that five-year pe, period as where, as well. And then, um, the Markham Millis Community Center. We have about $6 million allocated for that at this point, although that's a, a really, um, conceptual number because we have not, um, researched, um, or done any surveys with the community to see what the actual uses are that, uh, will be needed there. So, um, that mu, that number might, might fluctuate over the next year or two. So, some major multi-year projects, again, uh, the high, uh, to highlight are the Swinging Bridge. Again, that's, uh, uh, gonna be, um, starting in May 2024. Trafficway Bridge, I think we've talked about that enough, but, um, the pavement management plan, uh, the 2024 to 25 budget is about $5 million. And then, the budgets start to se, to, to decrease significantly, um, over 2025 through '26, all the way to the end of our five-year CIP, uh, that ends 2028 through '29. So, we are anticipating the budget to be about a million and a half per year, um, those following years after this, uh, after this upcoming fiscal year. I think this is the last slide for, uh, major projects. We have more, but I wanted to highlight these. Uh, again, the 2024 pavement management project is $5 million. It's still under, under design, we're, so we're moving forward with that. And then we have some trenchless sewer lining, uh, over at the cemetery area, uh, and under Highway 101. Uh, those are clay, uh, pipes and cast iron pipes that are, are in need of replacement. And, um, it, the Highway 101, if you can imagine, uh, us having some kind of failure there, that would be catastrophic. So, we are in the process of, uh, lining those cast iron pipes and making sure that that does not happen. So, the council action requested is provide direction on the proposed five-year capital improvement program, the budget for that, and then the five-year, uh, Measure O 2006 Sales Tax Fund Expenditure Program. Uh, both, uh, programs will be brought back to the City Council for review and adoption in June. So, we'll have another chance to look at those with the council. And that, uh, ends our presentation. We can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Let's see if the council has questions. Any questions, Councilmember Seacrest? Councilmember George?
Just had one question and I apologize for not asking this earlier, but it just, um, I didn't see the numbers match up. So, I saw $6 million on there for the Markham Millis Building, but I'm looking at our Attachment Three and is that the Recreation Services Community Center Building that you're referring to? And that just shows, that doesn't show 6 million. So, I'm just wondering where you're allocating that 6 million.
Um, 6 million is for the construction phase of the project, so it's, the 6 million that Bill was referencing is the fiscal year '26, '27, and '27, '28 funding. We, uh, the $75,000 in '24, '25, and '25, '26 make up the additional $150,000. That would be for design of the project and to scope the community needs.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing, cause I still, I still don't see that adding up to 6 million. So, you're saying?
There's a five-year total column at the far right.
Right, and what I, I guess I'm not looking at the right one, cause I see 1.6. So, am I not looking at the right sheet? I'm on page 114. Attachment Three.
We'll look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing from Councilmember Barnage. Mayor Protem? Mike?
All right, so on page, uh, 112 of the packet, um, I'm looking at the, this is for this, the sewer projects and I'm seeing the trenchless rehabilitation and I, I see there in two different years, two, two. I wanted to check and see if, since we had trouble getting bids on too small a project, are we confident that we'll get good bids? Would we want to put these together in the same year and have, I think it'd be like a million dollars worth of projects if we moved the 475 to line up with the other three projects?
So, you're talking about? You're talking about, uh, the, the numbers I'm looking at are on Attachment One. That's the, that groups the sewer funds and then the trenchless, uh, projects are?
Let me just, one of the, one of the pro, the first project number is 612-58XX.
Yes.
You see that, the fourth one down? So, if you look over, there are three trenchless projects.
That's correct.
And then, two years later, there's another one.
Right.
So, when we had, what, we, when we had to take a bid that, where we only got one bidder, my understanding was that was because we didn't have big enough projects. I'm asking, are these, would we be better off to combine these projects or are these projects big enough to, to get, to get bidders? I don't remember that. I remember it being like, well, it was Linda Avenue, so I remember it being like 250, but I may be wrong.
Um, the, the three that we're looking at, uh, total up to about, uh, $700,000, a little over that. We normally get, uh, decent bids on that type of, or that size of a job, but, um, if we start to feel that the, the bidding process is soft, um, then we can take a look at adding that 28, 29 project, which is close to 500,000 to the, to that mix.
Be a little over a million, okay.
Sure. We, we do look at that, 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 that type of analysis kind of slides the scale for us. Uh, we do that on our streets projects. We've done that in the past, so we'll definitely keep that under consideration in this, in this project.
Okay, and then going back, going back one page, I'm looking at the wayfinding, uh, line there for $60,000. I, I thought we reduced that, and maybe this is different wayfinding signs, but I thought we reduced that wayfinding down to $5,000.
$5,000?
Remember, we were only gonna, we were only gonna do the parking, we were only gonna do the, the, the P signs?
That's true. We, we did focus, uh, initially on the P, on the parking signs, uh, but we were also taking into consideration all the kind of wooden signs with the white outline and then, um, upgrading those as well since, uh, several of them are really old and, and cracking and at the end of their life. So, we incorporated that into this process.
Well, I guess, I, I thought we gave fairly specific, different direction, but I'm hearing, I'm hearing different. Okay.
It doesn't happen often, but Guthrie, I think you're wrong on this one.
I, I'm gonna go back and look.
Yeah.
But, okay, um, and the last one is on the, on the streets, uh, program. Have we included the, the engineering that's necessary to do the, the pothauling where we go in and we think that it's one, the condition of the road is one state? This is what happened on, uh, Equestrian. It's one state, but when we actually go in and study, we find that it's in, in, in better condition than that. Have we, have we set up in our, uh, in our plan to do that for the whole city so we know, we, we, instead of finding out as we're in the middle of the project that, oh, wow, it really is worse than we thought or it's better than we thought, that we know in advance? So, are we doing the engineering in advance for? I, I understand project by project we are, but are we doing it for all of, all of the city at once?
Uh, we don't do it for all the city. We, um, do the testing, like, the, the pothauling on, uh, segments of road that we feel that need, they need to be addressed, um, immediately. So, um, if there's some sections that, uh, the condition is bad or they're at a point where they're about to go into a really degraded, uh, condition, then we start to look at those and we do, uh, testing on those to make sure that it's accurate, um, that we need to pursue, uh, some kind of, uh, treatment on those. So, we, we wouldn't do it on the, the whole city. We would do it on focused areas that we think, uh, are, um, that meet the criteria for the next round of, uh, rehabilitation.
Okay, well, I'm, I, I'm getting into comment there, but all right. I'm done with questions.
I found my answer, so you're good, thank you.
I found your answer, too.
Did you want to dance to kumbaya? That was awesome. I have two very minor questions. First one is, I think I understand what happened, but I just want to verify. I seem to remember that ARPA funds could not be used for pavement, but is it because the new rule is allowing us to move that to the general fund, which allows us to pay for it in the way that we choose? Is that basically what's happening?
Correct, yeah.
And then, on the Markham Millis Community Center, it says there's fundraising into late '25, '26. What does fundraising mean?
So one of the revenue sources on the Markham Millis Community Center is unidentified. So we, we funded 25% with local sales tax fund. We need to find 75% of the funding to fund the project as it is currently budgeted.
Okay. So fundraising means finding a partner or something like that?
Grant, something like that, yes.
All right, great. Thank you. So those are my only questions. All right. Let us open up public comment. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on this item? Seeing no one here, let's check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right. Let's bring this back to the council. Mayor Protam, do you want to kick it off since you were ready to do comments?
Okay. Yeah, I, I guess my one comment here is, and I'm fine with the plan as, as it's proposed, because they always change. But, but I do think doing the pot hauling in advance, because it does seem like we, we, we sort of pick the areas we're gonna work, and then we do the pot hauling, and then we find out that they're different than we thought. And maybe if we did the pot hauling in advance, we would find that there are streets that are, that are, that are more quickly repairable, that we think are, you know, are, are beyond repair, that they really are. And that's exactly what happened on, on Equestrian. I just think there's other areas of the city that are similar to where we would get more bang for our buck by, by knowing where those locations are. So that, that's my comment. I, I'll just leave it there.
Just as a quick question, how long are those results valid?
Testing? The, the results from the testing that, that takes place?
That Mayor Protam was speaking of.
Yeah, I, I would think that they're in the two to three-year range.
Okay.
Depending on the amount of degradation, but that, that's a average.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone else have comments? Mayor Protam, your, your light's still on, so.
All right, let me.
Yes.
My small comment. Thank you for all of your work.
So we're just gonna provide projection to, to approve it? Seems too simple. Is there a resolution? That's what I'm asking.
No, just provide direction.
Okay. I'll, I'll move that we direct staff to proceed with the five-year CIP plan.
Second. Motion is second. Can we get a voice vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. That takes us to item 12B. This is consideration of results of the community survey for potential future revenue measure. And I believe I'm turning this over to our city clerk, but our city manager has his, you guys gotta tell me on this thing who I'm really turning it over to.
We, we thumb wrestled over it earlier and I lost.
All right, Mr. Downing. We're all getting punchy now, aren't we?
Allow us to get the, the PowerPoint up real quick. All right, we should be good. So thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Matt Downing, your city manager. So this is the consideration of results of our community survey for a potential future revenue measure. So as part of the city's efforts to listen to the community regarding their priorities for our city, for Oro Grande, a community survey was mailed to all residents in, on February 22nd of 2024. This mailer included a tear-off response option for the survey, as well as an online option for completing. And we had almost 1,500 total responses, 1,444 by production date, but I believe we even got some more in the mail today. So we, we continue to get those in. In order to encourage residents' participation, we did some video and still ads that were developed and placed on various online platforms, driving viewers to the online version of the survey. So we had various city staff members, as well as targeted ads for those within a specific geolocation of, of the city. And so I, I mentioned, we did receive two additional earlier today. The survey is and continues to be open. You can continue to provide that feedback. We are, we are listening to you. Here you see a ranking of all of the different options that we, that we heard from the community. On average, the top three priorities that were ranked by the residents responding to the survey were to maintain lifesaving fire protection and paramedic services, to maintain 911 rapid response and emergency police services, and then repair and pave and maintain Oro Grande's 73 miles of roads, fix potholes and damaged sidewalks. So at the, looking at that data a little bit closer, you can see that the repair and pave actually has more number ones. So while the weighted average for the repair and pave and the maintain 911 and lifesaving fire protection services are all right there and, and they're kind of interchangeable, you can see that there, those three top priorities of the community are very much grouped together. So that's encouraging. We, the fact that we got as many responses as we did is incredibly encouraging. And I'm not at all surprised based on the engagement of our community. So what are our next steps on this? So in order to continue listening to the residents and their priorities for the city, we will do the following, as you can see up there. We're gonna do a follow-up mailer that's gonna be sent again to all of the Oro Grande residents. One thing we heard on some of the write-in comments was, this is great, but we'll never hear the responses, or we'll never hear what people said. So that's actually what we're doing. We're gonna send them a mailer and tell them what they said. And then we're going to also encourage, tell them that we're still listening to you. We, we will continue to listen to you indefinitely. We will continue with public outreach on the city's needs and results of the community survey, including, we're gonna do some presentations to service communities. I believe, I don't know if it's this Thursday or next Thursday, I'm speaking to the Quanis at 7:30 in the morning and going over some of what we've heard. That's what I've heard. I'm looking forward to it. And then we will also, we're having stakeholder conversations with, with different stakeholder groups throughout the rest of this month, throughout May. And then we will be having a, obviously we have tonight's item, which is again telling the city council and the community what we've heard, what's important to the residents. And then we will be returning for an item for the city council's consideration of funding options for city services and a potential revenue ballot measure in the coming meetings for you. So that, those actions will occur in May. The online survey will remain open until late May, so feel free to continue to take those if you haven't done it already. But really, the message is, we have an engaged community. They value their, their first responders and they would like to see roadways fixed and paved. So we continue to listen, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has.
All right. Let's see if the council has questions. Any questions?
Just have one quick question. First of all, I'm super impressed by this whole process. Are we able to use some of this data for our general plan?
So it's a little different than what you would typically get in a general plan survey, where that's really looking at kind of the vision 20 years down the road, whereas this is going, what's most important to you kind of right, right now? So we are having that action and that process separately and, and kind of parallel courses. But we're, we're definitely listening and, and through that process, and that's also helping to inform this process as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burnage?
Just one quick question. I don't know if, why I hadn't noticed this before, but in the, the top three priorities, as far as the number one, maintain lifesaving fire protection and paramedic services, we don't have paramedics on our engines. We have private ambulances. We have EMTs. But anyway, so I just don't know if that has to be fixed. I just want people to kind of know what, what's included and what's not included.
Certainly. So I'm actually really glad you asked that question, because our Mr. Lane out in the audience asked me that same question after looking at the survey. So our consultant does this for a living.
Yeah.
And part of the issue, similar to when you say, fix our infrastructure, residents think roads, but we have much more than just roads when it comes to infrastructure. Same way with this. When you say firefighting services and you say EMT or EMS, they, they don't know the difference between that and somebody in an ambulance that shows up, a paramedic that shows up. So it was a way to kind of help group like uses, to like uses. And we will be adjusting that. Should the council in the future decide to direct staff to move forward with a revenue measure, we will be adjusting that to make sure it reflects what services they will get.
I would love paramedics on the engines, just side note right here. But anyway, okay, that's it.
Mayor Protam, any questions? All right. No questions for me. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to come forward?
Relatively uninformed member of the public here to confirm that, yes, there, I do not know the difference between one person who comes and helps me when I have, have a medical emergency and another person who comes help me when I have a medical emergency.
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen? Okay, let's go ahead and check in with the city clerk.
Any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment on this item, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
And we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. And we are just receiving and filing, right? Let us consider this received and filed, unless there is other commentary to be made?
I would just quickly note that I've heard from a lot of people that are so excited that we're asking them for their opinion and it's so easy for them to provide it. So kudos to all of staff and our consultant.
All right. So this does bring us to item 10A. We have a couple of recusals, not the least of which.
Are we already there?
Already.
Hang on. Just let me get to the agenda to make sure I say everything I'm supposed to. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I would be, I am recusing myself for the item this evening, which is public hearing 10A. I do own a property in Oro Grande that does infrequently, but does have a short-term rental associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And for myself, I'm making the similar comment, although not infrequently. So I am conflicted out because I have a financial stake in the outcome of the answer. So we will be removing ourselves from the dais. I will turn it over to Mayor Protam, who will wait for us to leave the room. And I won't get a chance to say goodnight to you, but those of you who are still with us, thanks for sticking with us through a very challenging meeting. And we look forward to seeing you, I look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. So, thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item 10A. I'm sorry, a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution leaving an annual assessment for the Oro Grande Tourism Business Improvement District and approving the AGT bid budget for 24, 25.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Sheridan Bulkin. I'm your Recreation Services Director, and tonight I am presenting the Oro Grande Tourism Business Improvement District's annual assessment and the proposed budget for fiscal year 24, 25. The Oro Grande Tourism Business Improvement District, otherwise known as the AGT bid, was initiated in 2013 to provide revenue to offset costs associated with promoting lodging businesses in the district. The assessment is 2% of the rent charged by lodging operators per occupied room per night for all transient occupancies, including vacation rentals and home stays. Administered by the city, the AGT bid advisory board oversees and directs the marketing efforts and budget of the AGT bid. Pursuant to the streets and highway code, AGT bid is to provide an annual report, which was presented to and approved by your council on March 26th of last month. The city's municipal code requires that the assessments for AGT bid be reviewed through a public hearing process for the upcoming year and the annual budget detailing anticipated expenditures to be submitted for approval by your council, which I bring before you tonight. The budget before you tonight was prepared with much time, thought, and discussion by the AGT bid advisory board. The total sum proposed for expenditures for the fiscal year 24, 25 is $500,500. And as you can see, it encompasses the following increases. An increase in marketing expenditures of $50,000, photo video assets of $10,000, co-op advertising of $35,000, event sponsorship of $80,000, and a new line item for influencers of $10,000. It also includes a reduction in merchandise of $10,000. In ongoing efforts to optimize the existing fund balance, budget allocations are proposed to temporarily increase spending in specific categories, thereby spending down the current fund balance until expenditures are in line with anticipated revenues. This approach is both strategic and sustainable for the next fiscal year. The recommendations before you tonight are to consider all protests for the AGT bid assessment, and if appropriate, extend the assessment for fiscal year 24, 25, and to adopt a resolution approving AGT bids 24, 25 budget. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
So, so, one, and maybe I'm just jumping ahead, have we had any protests?
Sure, I can go ahead and state on the record, but we do have to open the public hearing and we could get a protest done. Do you want to wait?
Yeah, we'll wait then. Okay. So I've, I've, two questions on the budget. And the first is, the, the marketing services budget goes from 200, it's been 200, close to 200 for a number of years, and now it's at 250? I wonder if you could explain 25% increase?
Certainly. We are anticipating additional work to be done on the website. And then with inflation and costs increasing, we are anticipating still maxing the contract at $225,000, which is what the contract is currently maxed out at, but allowing that, that extra $25,000 so that there can be increases or improvements done on the website as well.
So the marketing, the, the, the marketing services is, sounds like some significant amount of money spent on, additional money spent on the website?
Correct.
What, what have we spent so far, roughly? Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Give me just one second.
So Mayor Protam, in fiscal year 21, 22, on the website, we spent $7,765. In 22, 23, we spent $16,695. So approximately $25,000 total.
And we're looking at another $25,000 this year.
And this did come up at the T-Bid meeting, where they, it was asked, do we really spend that much money on websites? Apparently, last time we got a good deal, and we've been kind of deferred maintenance on our website since then. So it does, it does take money to actually update websites.
I thought the website was only about a year old.
That's correct, but there are some clunky pieces to the website. So while you can get a WordPress website fairly functional, there are nuances that you have to pay for and widgets and licensing and all of that sort of thing.
Well, let me just stay with the theme a little bit. So what, what does our website do that the county website doesn't?
So our website will take you directly to our business and lodging, like the owners or to their particular website. It gives you the contact information. It drills down much deeper, just specific to Oro Grande than the Visit Cal website does.
So if you were on the Oro Grande page of the Visit Cal's website, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be taken, you, you wouldn't go from there to Oro Grande Hotels?
You wouldn't have the same focus on Oro Grande as you do on the Visit Cal website.
All right. And then I see the other big. And then I see the other big, big number here is, is for event sponsorships. So I guess my first question, and I'm sorry I asked this question so late today, what, what have we done in the past? What events have we sponsored, and what kind of money did we spend on them?
So in the past, we've sponsored, so we can go back, I, I did get your, your question in time, I was able to pull up data from 2014, so depending on how far you want to go back, the last funding or events that we sponsored was in 2020, we sponsored $10,000 for Jubilee by the Sea, $5,000 for a youth baseball event, in 2019, there was $1,200 for a T-Bid showcase at the Midstate Fair, $10,000 for Jubilee by the Sea, $20,000 for Race Slow, $10,000 for AGVIA, and 2018, there was $12,000 for Jubilee by the Sea, $2,000 for the Strawberry Festival, 2017, $2,000 for a Chamber event, 2015, $10,500 for Saver, and 2014, $16,000 for Saver.
So we, we haven't done any events, it sounds like for the last three years?
During COVID, we didn't have any events, and this past year, we did receive three applicants for events, two of those applicants did withdraw, and one event was unresponsive to inquiry. We do have one event that's currently applying for sponsorship of $7,500.
But we have $100,000 in the budget?
For next year.
Okay. And it's a big jump, I guess, I'll just say I'm concerned about that right up front. So what, what, what do you anticipate? Where do you anticipate that, that money going? I mean, it's something that we haven't done much of in the past, it just feels like an awful big number.
Right, and from research that I've done, and for one particular event that could bring a three-day folk festival event to Arroyo Grande, for example, it's $100,000. So if we are to look at bringing other events, or to be able to advertise to promoters who might be willing or wanting to bring their events to Arroyo Grande, having seed money to be able to do that in multiple directions, I think would be very beneficial to bringing more tourism to Arroyo Grande.
All right. Comments, but no more questions. All right, let's go to comments then. Okay, all right.
And we have public comment as well. Sure.
You're officially opening public here. Okay, actually, if we could wait till the end of public comment, just in case there is a protest from public comment, yeah. So we have one individual in the audience, it's public comment. Any of the parts, yes.
Oh, you're like, I'm on T-Bid, so I'll just express that, I'm Jared Worthing, I'm a T-Bid member, I won't address the budget because I feel like Sheridan's doing a wonderful job. One piece that I would just like to put out there for maybe next year, I don't know what the process would be to look at it, it seems the AG municipal code maybe is narrower and tighter in what T-Bid can do than what state law allows, so I don't, I would just encourage maybe the council to look at that and see, like what other local cities are doing with their T-Bid budgets, and our municipal code narrows that down, if that's something that you, that the council still wants us to focus and tighten in on, but we, as you see, we, our discussions in the, the board meeting, where we have a, a large fund balance, and our efforts should be to spend that in productive ways, not just spend it, to spend it, but spend it in productive ways that will bring people to town, and it seems like maybe our municipal code is restricting some of the ways that we could potentially do that in our city. That's all for me.
Okay, if any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Okay, we do have Sean Desmond, and Sean, you're allowed to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys for taking this item and for all of your work tonight for council and staff, much appreciated. First of all, as the general manager of the Agrarian Hotel, and on behalf of Mike Panchal, who's the owner of the hotel, we both are in complete support of the T-Bid assessment and the marketing efforts that the T-Bid Fund goes to in promoting tourism for the city of Arroyo Grande. That would also be the same sentiment for Mike's other hotel, the Aloha Inn, so that's two of your hotels in the city. And then putting on my T-Bid hat, the, on the item of the event sponsorships, and the big jump, just to piggyback on what Sheridan was saying, I think the, the, the best way to think about that is that if we, we haven't had a lot of events, but we could attract some really great, bigger events with having a larger budget. If word is out there now that we only have $20,000 or $15,000 to spend, you know, and, you know, there's a lot of people that are probably not, you know, even thinking about asking us for that, but if we did have a large amount of money that we could bring in a large-scale event to help promote tourism and the city, that we would, we would be able to do that with closer to $100,000. That's it, thank you guys so much.
Okay, we have no other raised hands, so at that time, I'll report, I have received one protest for this item, but it does not constitute 50% of the assessment, so we don't have a valid protest.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, I'm happy to start. I just wanted to thank my appointee Sarah Kunkel, she did an excellent job emailing me and giving me a really thorough description and explanation of the increases in spending, so it made it very easy for me going through the budget to understand what, what the T-Bid Board was doing when they made the decisions that they made to, with the increases that you guys chose to make. I want to start by thanking the T-Bid Board. Having switched to this new format this past year, I, I feel that our board has really stepped up and done an excellent job analyzing this, this T-Bid funding and making really conscientious decisions that maybe weren't made in the past. That being said, I support all of the changes and the increases in spending, I think that that's what that money is there for. I confirmed with our city manager that we do not have a reserve requirement, so we should be spending the money, they're not spending all of it, there's still a, a good hefty chunk in there for a reserve for an emergency, but I think that the proposal on what has come before us makes sense to me, and with that, I'd be happy to approve the budget and also extend the assessment.
Sorry, trying not to cough. I would echo Councilperson George's comments. It seems as though things are going very well with the new, thank you, the new form, and I'm excited to see everything that T-Bid is doing, and I would approve the budget and the plan, thank you, thanks.
I guess this could put me in a little bit of a spot. Well, okay, so my concern about the $100,000 is, it's a third of, it's a third of our yearly income, so if we started a $100,000 special event, it's unsustainable, we can't do another $100,000 next year, this is one-time money that we're putting in here, so I am, I'm concerned when you hear about a, what's going to be a one-time event, that we're going to put $100,000 into, to, you know, to maybe, if you look at the math here, you know, maybe we generate enough business to, to get $10,000 back, so I, for one, am very concerned about the $100,000. I think I would be much more comfortable with a $50,000 amount, which is far more than we've ever used in the past, and would, would, would be big enough to, to then perhaps be, even that would be difficult to sustain, but would, would be sustainable. If, 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 if the event comes that is, that is the perfect event, that is a one-time deal, but is going to continue into the future, I think they could come back to council for the other $50,000. I'm just very uncomfortable with just rolling it out there. I might too want to thank my, my T-Bid member, we, we did discuss this budget at length. The difficulty for me here is that, I don't know if you realize this, but it takes all three of us, so I can't just vote no. I mean, that would end the T-Bid, so I'm, I'm hoping you guys will, 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 will come this way and, and go ahead and change the $50,000 and let, let them come back, if in fact they get that special event. Okay? And let me just add one other thing too, so I do also share, in fact, this was part of our discussion, looking at other possibilities of what other cities have done, Pismo spends a significant amount of their money on, on capital projects. Technically, I think we could do it in, inside our, we could just change the business plan, and we could probably get there, to be able to do some sort of a project as long as, as long as it is clearly tourist-serving. The example I would give was the mural project that came from Visits, Visit Slow, Cal Slow, and where they not only did the mural, but they clearly had a program around the mural. So it is something that, that, that I think, that I think we could get to without, without too, too much pain. So I did want to echo that to staff, that that's something that I've actually asked staff to take a look at, what our possibilities are, so I'll leave it there.
I'll piggyback off of that and say I've also asked previous staff that question, even if it's just to beautify the village, because so much of our advertising is to come to the village, come to the village, and so the, the local business owners are saying, how can we use some of that T-Bid money to actually beautify the village? So along the same lines, a mural, whatever that is, I think it might behoove us to take a look at what, what parameters that the T-Bid Board has to work with, and if we might need to see if there's any way to give them a little bit more liberty with the funding. I would, I'm okay with $100,000, I'm happy to go down to 50, that means we're going to come to a compromise. I will say that if they don't find the event, they won't spend it, so that's not like a guaranteed spend, it just would just kind of give people more opportunity to come and negotiate with us, and, and even consider us as an option, we're right now, because the funding is so small, we're not even being considered. So that's my only thing, and I understand that, you're right, $100,000 event may not be sustainable, but someone may come in and say, hey, you know, maybe it's a $75,000 event, and next year we don't have to pay the extra $25,000 for marketing services, and we can kind of play around with the budget that way, but that being said, I'm happy to reduce that to 50,000 so that we can get to a decision tonight. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for offering that.
Didn't, when you talk about $100,000 for an event, I mean, you're saying that, that's what's out there, that's what it costs for a larger type of event, that would bring people in in a bigger way, so I'm okay with that, and I'm not as worried about sustaining it from year to year, because if you got it and it's successful, I feel like there's a lot of different ways that could possibly be funded, but having said that, I'm not going to hold this up, and I understand what Mayor Protem, the point is, and, you know, I just hope there's, we were able to move forward with something bigger, so submitted, thank you.
I'll move a resolution, City Council of the city of Arroyo Grande, levying an annual assessment for the Arroyo Grande Tourism Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2425. And then we'll take the, the budget resolution separate, or do you want me to combine them?
You can do both at the same time.
Okay, and then approve the, the proposed, adopt the budget with the change of reducing the event sponsorships to 50,000.
And just a question for our motion maker, in a presumed second, so would part of that motion be to change the line item within the budget for event sponsorships at $50,000 and return to council to utilize an additional $50,000?
No, just reduce it to 50.
Understood, thank you.
Second.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Thank you.
So are we now going to return to?
Correct, so general public comment was left open, so the city will provide the opportunity for anyone who'd still like to speak under general public comment.
With that, I'll invite anyone in the chambers who would like to speak under public comment, and with that, we'll go online.
Okay, any members of the public on Zoom that would like to make a comment for items not on the agenda, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
If that close, public comment, and I guess we go right to adjournment, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.